Hi, this is John Heisenbauer. I'm kind of deaf here because the board clerk has not unmuted. So there's no sound. If you can hear me, can somebody raise their hand?
John, I am able to hear you. This is Diane Cruz. John is correct. The board clerk has muted the Zoom meeting.
Can you hear now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. We can hear you now. Thank, thank very much. But John Heisenbauer, Amador Fire Safety Council Board wanted to report some good news to the Board of Supervisors. We just recently received word from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy that we will be receiving a grant from SNC to conduct fuel reduction work on nine parcels of BLM properties scattered throughout Amador County. That includes the Buckhorn Ridge area, Ramsward Grave, and several parcels scattered along Shake Ridge Road. These parcels will serve as anchor points to create broader fuel breaks, expanding onto adjacent private lands. So we're really excited about this and wanted to bring it to your attention because there is no way we would have received this grant without the support of the Board of Supervisors. Your letters of support to the Sierra Nevada Conservancy is really make a difference. So thank you very much and work will begin in late 2022.
Thanks, John. How much was the grant for?
The grant is for about $1.4 million and will be treating about 350 acres. So it's, it's, it's a pretty significant grant. And, and by the way, I just tallied up the grants over the last three and a half years that the Board of Supervisors have supported and helped us get. It's a little over $6 million. So we're, we're really rocking throughout the county. And many of those grants extend throughout the county, not just the, the up country.
I think you give the board too much credit, John, because the Fire Safety Council does all the heavy lifting. So we really appreciate what you do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there another public comment from Miss Cruz? Put your hand up for a moment.
I think there was concern because we weren't broadcasting the whole, everything that Commissioner said was muted, unfortunately.
All right. Supervisor Brown?
Yes, I'd like to compliment Bob Fine for orchestrating an equipment and massification demonstration at the old Cedar Mill. They allowed the public to come out there on their property and watch actual demonstrations to see what equipment for massification can be done in the high country and what equipment is out there. People came all the, you know, demonstrators came all the way from Montana. Our, a few of our local companies were out there too, showing off their equipment. So it was much, it was a, it was a needed thing for people to understand what massification is and what equipment can help out people's properties.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Supervisor Orneto?
Yeah, a couple of comments. One is our library is just about being completed, the renovation. Bad news is somebody was even having a bad hair day or maybe some issues. Broke, broke one of the brand new sliding glass windows in the entrance and went down Main Street Jackson and broke out like five additional windows. And I guess the point I'm making is I brought up some other meetings, but I think we probably need to lobby the federal government, maybe state, because we've got a mental health problem in our state and what's out there. City Jackson is incapable of dealing with, Amador County is incapable of dealing with. We don't have the staff or the funding to, to lift that load. And I think something needs to be done. It's, it's a big problem. So something I think on a future agenda, we ought to put it on an agenda and send a letter to the federal government and state saying, hey, we need some help on this. And it's, and it's a problem throughout California, pretty big time. And lots of my friends who traveled throughout the United States, it sounds like it's getting to be a problem throughout the whole country. With that said, also, yesterday, Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara came out and looked for one of the old fuel breaks that Amherst Fire Safety Council did up off of Luthy Road. And so we were kind of lobbying him saying, hey, you know, we're, we're doing all we can and we also need their support on these projects and just trying to show what's being done and saying, hey, we need more of it being done. So Mr. Heisenbauer was out there yesterday and so some other members of Fire Safety Council. So it was good to see him there because the fire insurance is a big deal.
I think you need recognition from the insurance industry that that work is being completed. Because right now they look down from 30,000 feet and don't even take that into account when they set the rates per the actuarials.
Oh, no, it's true. And I think something else, I've been saying it for years, and I got accused of being one to kill trees, but people need to clean up around the yards all they can. And you look, you look to our south, that county's been burnt out. You look to our north, that county's been burnt out, and multiple counties. And yeah, they call us Asbestos County, but look at the fuel loading out there. And my advice is clean up your yard. The house you save may be your own.
Any other comments? If not, then we'll move on to our regular approval of our agenda. And we do have a change. Item 7G on the consent agenda will be moved to the regular agenda per county council. It was in the legislation that it has to be approved. Originally, it was adopted by the board and scheduled for a waiving of the reading, which was done on 2022, April 12. And then it was just approved on consent today. Per the legislation, it has to be approved on a regular agenda. So we'll set that. 5L adoption of an uncodified ordinance approving a military equipment use policy pursuant to A B bill, to Assembly Bill 480. We'll set that for item 7G, excuse me, 5L. It is item 7G on the consent. We'll set it as item 5L on our regular agenda.
With those changed, I'll approve the agenda.
Okay.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda with that change. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Most carries. So then with that change also, with that item removed from the consent agenda, we need approval of the consent agenda.
What the removal, I, of the, an agenda?
Motion by Supervisor Brown. Is that you, Supervisor X? Second by Supervisor X to approve the consent agenda with that change. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Most carries. Thank you. Move on to our regular agenda then. Item 5A, General Services Administration Regional Broadband Roadmap Project Presentation. And Mr. Hopkins, good morning. Do we have someone on Zoom, Zoom two representing?
Yes, Diane Cruz. John Hopkins, General Services Director. This is a, this agenda item is a follow-up to the report that was given to the board in January. Just a brief introduction that the Central Sierra Economic District, which is composed of five counties, went after a half a million dollar grant, was awarded that grant for a planning and strategic grant for broadband to deal with upcoming broadband infrastructure that the state is proposing through their middle mile infrastructure projects and any other project. Diane Cruz is with NeoConnect. She is, I believe Diane, you're going to share your screen. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And she, and what you have in your packet today is the final draft report. Once Diane hears from all boards, all five counties, I, I think she's scheduled to hear from Mariposa this afternoon, they'll develop a final report out of all the comments. Hopefully you've had time to read that and, and you'll have time to do a Q and A with Diane on this final report. At this point though, I'd like to turn it over to her to give her presentation and Q and A from the board if you got any right now. If not, we can go to Diane.
All right. Very good. Ms. Cruz?
Great. Thank you, everyone. It's good to be with you this morning. Let me, hopefully you can see my screen. Okay, great. I'll go through this quickly. As John mentioned, you've received the larger report and then you've also received an executive summary for Amador County. So I will just go over the highlights of our findings and recommendations. And I'd like to leave most of the time available for questions and answers. So some of this information you have seen, but the current broadband landscape, particularly in Amador County, is there is a large portion of your households, 58% that are eligible for grant funding that's available in response to the pandemic. Both the American Rescue Plan Act, the State of California, and the Infrastructure and Jobs Act are providing over $400 billion in funding for broadband infrastructure. And so now is the best time ever to invest in broadband in your county. About 88% of your residents receive the minimum standard of 25 by three. That's kind of an old standard. We've realized that we need much greater capacity to serve the current needs of people that are working from home or attending school, or maybe even having a medical appointment while they're at home. So a minimum of 58% of your parcels in the county are eligible for most of the grant programs. This is a map that shows the whole entire Central Sierra five county region that was included in the study. The areas that are shown in purple are those areas that are quote served, meaning they meet the lower standard that the state of California has, which is 10 megabits per second in download speeds and one megabit per second in upload speeds. We'll do a deeper dive into Amador County and show you where those parcels are that are eligible for funding and could use funding to improve broadband services. A quick, a couple of highlights. We did conduct some residential and business outreach and we have results from a survey. A couple of highlights for you on this survey is that during the pandemic, people were working at home and we asked people if they would continue working at home. If they were able to do so, and 43% that they would choose to work from home, but they wouldn't be able to do everything because they don't have internet that's fast enough. 16% of the respondents said that they couldn't work from home because the internet is not fast enough. They can't conduct their work at all. And other, I think, takeaways is that reliability is most important to people, followed by speed and then price. And a couple of our other questions that we included in the survey are good questions to include because it helps inform the service providers of what people would be willing to pay. So this last question that I'm highlighting talks about that 44% of the survey respondents said that they would take the very best service that's available, one gigabit service, and they would spend between $100 and $150 a month. Those are good numbers to share with service providers as we're talking to them about potentially putting together a public-private partnership. I mentioned that there's a lot of grant funding available. The state has already set aside $6 billion in investment through their portion of the American Rescue Plan Act. And 3.2 billion of that will go to a middle mile network, which is basically a network that connects communities within the state and gives access to internet supply or is connected to the large internet hubs across the state. $2 billion of that $6 billion will be set aside for last mile broadband or broadband services within your community to serve homes and businesses. And they're also setting up a loan loss reserve fund and they're creating a broadband czar position at the California Department of Technology. If we take a look at what the state is investing, they are shown on this map as the bright pink lines. These are the lines that the state is planning to invest in what we are referring to as middle mile fiber infrastructure. The blue line is existing fiber that was put in place by SCENIC and that was put in place about 10 years ago to connect to the schools and libraries within the state. The pink, as I mentioned, is what the state is planning to invest. And as a part of our study, we looked at suggested middle mile routes, those shown in green that would provide further redundancy and reliability to the region. And keep in mind that this is a long-term investment. You know, these lines may not be built for five years, but I think it's something to You know, these lines may not be built for five years, but I think it's something to include in your planning. We put together-
Diane, could I stop you real quick on that last slide?
Sure.
Okay, two, two points. So the green is not proposed by the state, so that's being proposed through this, you know, through your report here?
Yes.
Is that my understanding? And then the CNLs, I remember when I read through the report about a month ago, the draft, draft version, do we need more of those? And one of the CNLs that's proposed is in this region that the state hasn't committed to, the Public Utilities Commission hasn't. So do we need more of these CNLs, these hub-type places?
Yes, we do. That's a great question. So yes, you're right. The, the green dots are general locations where we are recommending a carrier-neutral location or a carrier-neutral facility. And that's basically a carrier-grade facility that can house equipment to light up this fiber. And the reason why we're proposing them in those general areas is most of this middle mile fiber needs to have equipment that provides transmission and regeneration of the signal. And so, and it also serves as a carrier-neutral, meaning facility that any provider could potentially use to co-locate their equipment to connect to the middle mile fiber network and then provide, hopefully, last mile services to the community. Part of our, it was not included in our scope of work to do a deeper dive into the actual buildings of these facilities. But one of the deliverables that we're providing is a map that shows all of the anchor institutions. So the schools, libraries, medical facilities, where there may be an existing building. It also provides government facilities where we could potentially retrofit an existing building to establish a carrier-neutral facility. Or you can also look at potentially a prefabricated building that has, you know, things like backup power generators and security access and so forth, so that it's a carrier-grade facility. And then you're correct on the assumption on the green lines are those lines that have been recommended per the study to provide further redundancy and resiliency of your proposed fiber networks. So rather than have these pink spurs that end, we're recommending you extend that so that you have a network that can reroute around network failures or catastrophic events.
This is Supervisor Onetto. I had a question looking at your map that shows a different, oh, proposed routes and what's out there. I thought there's like a, some last mile or maybe middle mile that went up into the Fiddletown area? And it doesn't show on the map. I was kind of wondering why.
Yeah, there, there might be. I'm sure that there's additional fiber that we haven't been able to map. One of the challenges in mapping fiber is many of the, many of the service providers will not share where their fiber is located due to security reasons. And so these are the maps of fiber facilities that we have been able to identify that are available in the public domain. So-
Yeah, I think, I think this was put in under Obama's administration, and I think it was a pretty major project. And it was fiber, and so I just wonder why it didn't show.
Do you know what carrier put that fiber in place?
Not offhand, no.
Okay, so-
I can't help though.
Available to SCENIC or VAS Networks or the state, we were able to map it. If it was a private carrier, you know, we can certainly contact them and see if they would be willing to share their mapping facilities with us. But it wasn't available in the public domain.
Okay, thank you.
We put together a bill of materials and estimates for these middle mile routes. And so the CPUC build, that top line is the pink lines that we're showing on the previous map. One thing that you might want to consider is either the service providers or maybe PG&E may want to install shadow conduit or an additional conduit while the network is being built. And so we put together a cost estimate for what it would be to do shadow conduit while you're doing the CPUC build or while the state is doing that build. And then the additional facilities that we're recommending, we put together the cost estimates for that as well. One thing I wanted to share with you is that the expectation is not necessarily that Amador County would pay for this cost. Regional fiber networks or middle mile fiber networks, they, they benefit the entire state and they benefit the entire region and the surrounding areas of the region. And so what we would recommend is that you bring in additional partners like Caltrans and PG&E in the surrounding areas to look at ways to fund the middle mile fiber networks. My slide kind of went ahead of me, but let me jump into the last mile investment. So here's a more detailed map of where your parcels are located that have buildings. And those are shown as the red dots on this map. The purple areas are those areas that are quote "served". They have greater than ten by one megabits per second in service. The areas that are shown in tan are those that have less than that, so they have terrible broadband service. The ten by one is also a low standard. And so we would caution you that you might want to think bigger than what the state of California had originally defined as served. The new programs for all of the grant funding that are available, the minimum threshold is a hundred megabits per second in download speeds and twenty megabits per second in upload speeds. So a good portion of your county are eligible for grant funding. The last mile estimates that we put together, they're really your worst-case scenario estimates because we're assuming a hundred percent underground construction, which is the most expensive way to build a fiber network. After we submitted the report, we, we were asked to put together estimates based upon the assumption of using some aerial construction and some underground construction. And we can easily change the assumptions on our estimates, you know, based upon your preferences. But we wanted to give kind of worst-case scenario estimates, and then we can certainly tweak those assumptions if you would like. But there's a lot of rock, obviously, in the Central Sierra, and so that also increases the prices. The state of California is a very expensive place to build fiber as well, primarily because you have prevailing wage requirements. And some of your requirements for environmental reviews are more stringent than other states. And so the estimates that we put together, I just want to emphasize, are worst-case scenario estimates. Based upon the districts, we separated the districts then into unserved areas and served. And so, for example, in District One, there are four hundred and sixty-three parcels that have a building on them that are considered unserved. There's two thousand four hundred and nine parcels that are considered served. Here's the total plant miles. Again, we assumed a hundred percent underground construction, but these are really easy to change. And so if you want us to put together estimates based upon different assumptions, you know, please let us know, and we can easily do that. These, these numbers and these charts are good charts to provide to the service providers so that they can run their own scenarios in terms of what it would cost if they built it internally or if they subcontracted with their existing vendors. The results are shown here. It's a total cost of about fifty-four million to serve all of the, or to build fiber to the premise for all of your unserved parcels. So, you know, these first columns for each district. As I mentioned, after we did the report, we ran the scenario of, well, what would it cost if we did aerial construction? And the cost for aerial construction is about sixteen point five million. The trade-off with aerial construction is number one, fire mitigation in risk is certainly there. I know that PG&E is working to bury many of their electric lines, and so there may be an opportunity to partner with PG&E as they're burying their facilities that you could put in a shadow conduit to reduce your overall costs of underground construction. The other trade-off is that with aerial construction, there's a requirement to pay a pole attachment fee on an annual basis per pole. And so that drives up the operating expenses of the network. And all of the grant programs will pay for capital costs, but they typically won't pay for operating expenses. So, you know, there's some trade-offs in terms of looking at aerial construction, which is a much lower capital cost, but it has the trade-off of a higher operating expense. But again, these are discussions that we could have with the service providers, and we can change the assumptions based upon what makes the most sense within Amador County.
When you say aerial construction, you mean cell towers, that type of wireless?
Actually, no. What I'm talking about is building fiber using the existing utility poles in the area.
Okay, all right.
That's a great question. So as you know, there's a lot of money in the American Rescue Plan Act. There's three hundred and forty billion dollars that's available for broadband. And so I'm providing a breakdown of what those pools of funding, how they're being administered. The next big round of funding is the Capital Projects Fund that's administered through the Department of Treasury. The state of California will, will receive four hundred, five hundred and forty million dollars under this program for broadband implementation. And they, the state is looking at rolling out the rules and requirements for the application and administration of this funding this year. So that's the next big source of funding that will fund a lot of these projects. That's in addition to the six billion dollars that the state has already set aside for broadband through their portion of the American Rescue Plan Act. Let's see. I think you all are aware of the local COVID, the local fiscal recovery funds. Each, each of the counties and municipalities received funding through that program on a per capita basis. Another big source of funding that we'll see in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three timeframe is the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. So there's sixty-five billion dollars for broadband. Forty-two billion of that will be administered through the BEAD program. And each state will receive a minimum of a hundred million dollars through this program. And so that's another large source of funding that will be coming available later this year or the beginning of, of next year. In order to qualify for that funding, each state needs to do a five-year plan and submit it to NTIA. And so the state of California, I think, is working on that right now. So what we're recommending for next steps is many of the grant programs are encouraging local governments to partner with the private sector and to engage the service providers in this process and potentially share in the capital costs. So we are recommending that you do some type of formal process to engage the existing service providers in the area, as well as other service providers that are offering internet services throughout the state and the region. And we're recommending an invitation to negotiate process rather than an RFP process so that you could have negotiation discussions with the service providers. We just finished a really successful program in Stearns County, Minnesota. We're very similar terrain, very rocky and difficult to build, very rural, low population density. And Stearns County submitted an invitation to negotiate with the service providers. They put a stake in the grounds and stated that they would invest sixteen million and the service providers and targeted grant programs that are available through the state. They're looking at a fifty-five to sixty million dollar investment with the service providers contributing funding, and then the state is going to contribute funding. And with this process, about ninety-five percent of their unserved areas will be served. And so we recommend that the Central Sierra region also has a formal process to engage the service providers. And the Tuolumne County is administering the grant that you receive to pay for the broadband study. And there's additional budget left over in your grant with EDA. And the next steps are Tuolumne County is recommending that you do some type of formal process throughout the five-county region. That meeting is scheduled in May, the mid-port, portion of May. And so hopefully, Tuolumne County will agree that that's a good next step. We also highly encourage you to formalize your discussions with Caltrans, the state, and with PG&E. So I mentioned that PG&E is burying a lot of their existing utility infrastructure to mitigate fire damage and fire risk. And so there may be an opportunity to partner with PG&E to do a joint build and to share in some of those costs. There's another effort that's happening on a regional basis. RCRC is working throughout the thirty-eight county region on broadband planning. And we encourage you to be a part of those discussions, especially as it relates to the middle mile infrastructure that could be beneficial to the five-county region. One thing I just want to say is that you're ahead of the game, if you will, where you've already done your broadband roadmap, you've identified areas where you could potentially invest. And so the work that you're doing through this study gives you, I guess, a little bit of a head start over what RCRC is putting together now. But we highly encourage you to participate in that process with them as they're looking at a larger regional effort to improve broadband in the, in the region. Tuolumne County is looking at an environmental impact study that would be county-wide. I'll give you an example. In Eldorado County, we applied for grant funding through the EDA to build out middle mile infrastructure, and they were awarded a conditional award through EDA about a year ago. And in the past year, they have been conducting their environmental impact study. So it's prolonged the process, if you will, of getting started. That process took about a year. So one thing that you might want to think about is getting ahead of the game and trying to do a more county-wide environmental impact study. Tuolumne County is looking at doing that as a next step. And these projects that we've put together are shovel-ready, and so you are now available to potentially apply for grant funding, bring in some service provider partners, and align the roadmap with the state and federal grant opportunities that are available for broadband. So with that, I will turn it over to you all for questions.
Board members' questions.
Diane? Supervisor X, but one thing that the plan doesn't discuss is the, the importance of satellite versus fiber. And then satellite and fiber hybrid-type networks, is that something that should be considered, or how does that fit in?
Yeah, so the, the plan talks about that a little bit. So satellite services have improved. And Starlink has initiative to deploy much higher bandwidth broadband using satellite technology. And so for your very rural areas, that can be an excellent solution. We're told is that the initial costs are high and the service is not available ubiquitously. It's not available everywhere. And so there's some downsides with satellite, but it certainly is a good stopgap effort or initiative that will help especially the really rural areas within the county. We did not look at wireless technology because all of the grant requirements in the grant programs require technology that can support a minimum of a hundred megabits in download speeds and twenty megabits per second in upload speeds. And although wireless technology has improved- And although wireless technology has improved, it does not support that level of speed and capacity. So we focused our study on looking at fiber and looking at how you could build fiber to every premise and to every business.
Any any thoughts or considerations? Uh, you mentioned that uh, Toomey is advocating for a formal process throughout the five county region. Does that is that going to strengthen our position at the table for these grant monies that are being provided by the state and federal government, especially for last mile? I think that's going to be what's critical.
Yeah, I really think it's a critical next step. Um, because many of the service providers have infrastructure, they would like to leverage their existing infrastructure. And all of the grant programs are really structured towards a public private partnership. And so I highly recommend that that is a critical next step. And yes, that would allow you to even further align with the grant programs that are coming available later this year and next year.
Diane, this is Chair Forrester. One thing you didn't mention, should we be looking, I know in hundred and twenty three of your presentation, page hundred and twenty three, you made a couple of recommendations. One was to implement broadband friendly policies. Should we be looking at passing ordinances so that utilities have to share the um, the avenues that they have for um, once they put the conduit in place or whatever. You you know the language and you know what I'm talking about. Should we be putting those ordinances in place so that utilities are forced to work together?
Yes, yes, that's a good point. Um, so one of our recommendations is to put in a really strong dig ones policy. But more importantly, if you have a dig ones policy to perfect it, to put in what's called or referred to as a shadow conduit policy. And what that is just essentially means that anytime there is work that is being done in the public right of way and that could be done, you know, by uh, the Caltrans and Department of Transportation, or it could be PG&E is doing work or maybe another service provider is doing work. Um, it costs a lot less to install shadow conduit. Maybe referring back to the charts that we showed about the middle mile infrastructure bill of materials and estimates. It's on average in your area, because there's a lot of rock, the cost to put in fiber underground is anywhere from thirty five dollars a foot up to fifty dollars a foot. When you're putting in shadow conduit, when work is already being done in the public right of way, that cost is driven down to, say, five to seven dollars a foot. So it dramatically reduces your cost to build the infrastructure. So that's a really important um, policy that you could put in place to reduce the overall cost of broadband implementation, particularly fiber. And another recommendation might be for any new real estate developments that you're also putting in the requirement to put in conduit for developers. Um, we have a a number of other suggestions of policies that help reduce the cost for broadband services. And as a deliverable, we'll provide sample language of all of these policies and ordinances that you could potentially adopt. But to answer your question, yes, that's that's a great idea. And it is one of the suggestions that we put in the final report.
Diane, this is Supervisor Onetto again.
Let me finish one more question, I'll follow up on that. The um, if the infrastructure is already in place, could we pass an ordinance to allow that sharing? And I would guess with a cost payment back to the the one that originally put it in. But could the ordinance go retro and and authorize those utilities that already have the infrastructure in place to be required to to share it?
You have to be a little bit careful there. Um, so broadband services are unregulated. And so if an existing service provider already has fiber in place, they're not required to share it. And so you would not be able to put in something retroactively because there isn't really a mechanism that allows you to regulate that. Um, but going forward, you could require shadow conduit. And you could state that you would only pay for the incremental costs of that shadow conduit. And then further, you could provide maps of key routes that you um, would require shadow conduit to be installed. You could certainly talk to the people that have existing fiber. Um, although they're not required to share their fiber, there may be an opportunity, because there could be a long term lease that is put in place or they may want to leverage that asset to extend broadband. So there's areas for potential negotiation. And so it's not a missed opportunity. Um, there is an opportunity to potentially share in the use of that fiber, but you know, that would require an engagement and negotiation with the fiber owner.
President Onetto.
Yeah, I was looking at that, so um, starting that fiber is talking about CVIN, which is done like with I call with scenic also. And I think one of the problems that we've seen there is, yeah, they put that through kind of like the Plymouth Fiddletown area. And just talking to people, it sounds like part of the problem was what they want to connect to get service was extremely expensive. How do we get around that problem?
So I think, so CBIN or VAST, they're they're doing business as vast networks. And um, we've seen in other areas of California that they've offered very competitive rates. And so I think it's just a matter of sitting down with them and talking to them. Um, I, we were not, I didn't pull what their backhaul costs are to use their fiber. Um, but I know that they're offering that in other parts of the state. And we've heard that a couple of times in the region that their costs are high. But in other parts of the state, they're not. So I think it's a matter of sitting down with them and talking to them about how could we make it easier for the service providers to use their network? And how can we make it so that it's cost effective for them to use? One of the initiatives of putting additional middle mile fiber in that the state controls is, you know, it provides the opportunity for further competition. And so, you know, market forces may force them to lower their costs to use their network. But I would suggest sitting down with them.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? Looks like there's quite a disparity and this may be pre census, but District Five is still at unserved, just short of forty million dollars. That's quite a lot more than the rest of the districts. I think the nearest one is um, District One with almost seven million. So um, I don't know Diane, what do you, what do you do on things like that? I guess that's because of the nature of the construction in District Five. But um, prioritizing, that's a big disparity between the districts that are unserved.
Yeah, I think in District Five, what we're seeing is that the, and let me pull up the presentation so I can talk more intelligently. Um, so in in District Five, you've got really low household density per mile. Um, let me see here.
Also Supervisor Forrester, I did notice on one of the maps, it shows the the new district lines. So I I do believe that they're dealing with the current population and the current district boundaries.
Yes, that is correct. We did use the revised district boundaries that were provided um, late last year. And so the reason why District Five is so much higher than other areas is that the household density per mile is much greater. So it's just, it's a much more rural area than some of the other districts.
You said household density per mile is much greater, you mean much less?
I'm sorry, yes. Much less. Yeah, so so as an example, if you look at slide number eleven or page number eleven in the presentation, there's about halfway through towards the top, there's a density of household HH per mile. In District One for unserved, there's twenty one households per mile, which is pretty good density. Um, in District Five, it's eight point seven seven households per mile. Um, just to give you kind of a rough um, target, many of the service providers, if you've got density per mile of thirty five households, it's um, great density and they could make an adequate return on their investment. So with a much lower density per mile, there's, you need to have a subsidy of some sort for the service providers to build. Uh, or else figure out some other way to drive down some of the capital costs.
That disparity, we all try and work together on the board and and help out each each district. But um, I'm looking at economies of scale here too, and you kind of choose where you live sometimes. And that could cause you to have a harder time getting getting services like this.
Well, I think there might be, you know, maybe a mixed strategy. I mean, there's certainly parts of District Five, like Shenandoah Valley, which is imperative, I think, to have good broadband coverage. And maybe some of the other areas, which is maybe more kind of in the ranch, um, an agricultural region that satellite might be an option or a mix. Uh, where fiber goes up to a to a satellite antenna and broadcasts or some kind of wireless, I guess.
What you said Frank is real true, because I talked to um, I think Frank Kaczynski one time about when that uh, CVAN or VAST Networks went through, why why couldn't they go up through Shenandoah Valley? And he says, he'd like to see that happen, but I guess it came down real fast and they had their route set and that was it. Because it went up through Fiddletown, which would be great to see Fiddletown get that kind of service. But from here, it's even, it's unaffordable for basically um, residents in Fiddletown. Because they tried getting at the community center and I can't remember, we were trying to work with Volcano and they were saying, hey, VAST Network wants a lot of money just to connect in, so it wasn't financially feasible even to get to the community center. It's kind of sad because they spent a lot of grant money going up through that country.
And you choose where you live. I mean, where I live, I'm not going to have this broadband put in that area for a long time. It it's just not enough people to justify the cost. So we we make a choice to live there, knowing that we're going to have to pay for a service that may not be as reliable.
I understand that, Richard. What I'm saying is the federal government spent beaucoup bucks putting fiber optic up Fiddletown Road and then goes over through around hail road country. Not a lot of people up there. But they made it so expensive that people are up there, couldn't couldn't afford to tap into it. Kind of ridiculous what they did. Mr. Hopkins, did you have a comment?
I was just looking to get this wrapped up.
Diane, do you have any any closing comments?
I think my only suggestion would be to start, just to start somewhere. And um, I think once you make a commitment as a local government that you're going to invest in broadband, uh, it's interesting how many people start showing up. So you know, I think putting a stake in it in the ground stating that you're going to do something, you're going to start conversations with CBAN and other service providers. You're going to work with PG&E and Caltrans in the state to improve broadband. Um, once you make that commitment, then it's amazing how much is behind you, if you will. I would just highly recommend that this is the time, more than any other time, to invest in broadband because there's so much funding that's available in response to the pandemic. And so I would just encourage you to start and start somewhere.
No, I agree with what you're saying, is talking to people, a lot of people want to work from their home anymore, it's kind of a, it's a pretty big deal. And if they can't get the fast enough service, they have a hard time doing that. So I'd be kind of curious about um, a county wide environmental study that was talked about by Toomey. I'm sure it's going to be pretty pricey, I would think. John's looking kind of, kind of sick over there, John.
Yeah, it it would be pricey, but I can reach out to Toomey to see what they're doing. You know that their Economic Development Director, Cole Presibila, who is leading this effort, he's he's taken a job with the state, so they've got a new guy over there that I haven't talked to yet. Um, but he did that recently here. Uh, so we're going to play a little catch up. But um, yeah, RCRC, we're involved with RCRC. Uh, all the things that she's talked about, just getting past this final report so we have it. Their job with NeoConnect was to put together all this information, have you guys review it, make your final comments between all five board boards in those five counties. Uh, and then that gives us a template to to pass on to people like RCRC or the state of California to move forward and to implement some of these these recommendations that she's had. And some of them are going to come potentially with funding, as you have probably gathered. We'll have to talk about that at a later date.
Well, there's eight different sources of grants here, and I'm sure there's more than that. So there's a lot of money out there, but we need to get on the stick and you need to work a couple more hours a week. Um, I need to go to public and take public comment before we close this out. Any public comment? Lavenko, morning.
Good morning, Jamie Lavenko. Um, I'll be really brief. I live in the Tan area on one of those maps in Fiddletown. And um, I I kind of was thinking along the same lines as Frank when he asked about the technology and if the technology will be changing and how the fiber will work with like uh, new satellite services. I did sign up, it cost me ninety nine dollars to sign up for Starlink. I'm on a waitlist for, it looks like almost two years before that might come to my area. And then when it does, I believe the uh, it's about five hundred dollars for all of the equipment for us to hook up to it. And then um, the fees, monthly fees past that will probably be cost prohibitive for a lot in our community. So just something to think about when we think about that option. Um, I also wanted to encourage you, there's a lot of talk today about economic impacts of broadband, but I would also encourage you to think about the impact that having great broadband has for education. So um, if the pandemic has taught us anything, it has taught us that um, especially in higher education, kids can come home and go to college from home. So I think in a community like ours that does not have a higher education program, the opportunity for our youth to actually start to attend school, trade schools, all of those schools online from home could really benefit the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. I would note that the the surveys that were done, reliability was most important and then speed and then price. So people look at price as the third item on the list because they want that that service so badly. Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom? No, okay, Mr. Hopkins, want to wrap this up, anything else?
Yeah, the the main purpose today is for Diane to hear your final comments on this draft report. I've given her all my comments. Uh, if you guys have no other further comments, she can move on to Mariposa County and and get out a final report.
Uh, my last comment, I I realize underground is better. But when you look at costs, and yes, when we have a fire, a big storm, we're going to lose that aerial more than likely. But when you look at costs and the ability to get it done, there's such a huge disparity there from fifty five million to sixteen and a half million. Maybe in some areas, we're better off going with aerial to make it cost effective and and get the service there.
Well, it's the only way, sometimes you're going to give somebody to play because of, you know, it. I've talked to Comcast and AT&amp;T, they're very closed mouth. It's difficult to deal with them, they don't want to share any information uh, at all, even if even with the looming threat of somebody putting conduit in the same path that they have. Uh, they're like, sure, go do it. You'll realize the cost right away and your return on investment isn't going to be there. So that's that's a big challenge with all of this right now. And Diane touched on that a little bit.
I like what Diane had in her report, she cited some cities, I think one was in Colorado, Aurora, Colorado, that put all the conduit in ahead of time, but that costs money too.
It does. It does. And same of the, same with some of her suggestions about shadow conduit. That means there's got to be a fund set up somewhere, that if we make some agreement with PG&E, that every time you open up a trench, you're also putting in a conduit for the county or somebody else. You've got to have money to do that.
We've got a lot of work to do on this. Oh, it might be worth Mr. Ely us setting up some kind of subcommittee or ad hoc committee to deal with this, to, to make sure it keeps moving.
Well, we Supervisor Crew and myself have already met with John Hopkins about this, maybe a month ago. We saw, we had a draft, draft version of this report, so.
Yeah, the economic development, under economic development, where it's been.
So you'll continue that, those discussions to move along, especially on the environmental report, and a couple of the other areas that were, were brought up.
But if other supervisors want to have this brought back from time to time, we can do that.
Sure. That, that'd be a good way to do it, to keep the whole board in the loop and the public.
Know that we're not the only ones that are advocating for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
And thank you, Diane. Move on to item five B. Federal Services Administration, Pine Grove Civic Improvement Club Propose Improvements of Pine Grove Town Hall. This shouldn't take too long.
No, unless the board has any objections. The Civic Improvement Club wants to make improvements to the Pine Grove Town Hall. There is a recommendation there that if they make any of those improvements, that they go through the permit process, but those permit fees be waived, except for any of the state fees that, that we don't get to waive. We are trying to identify the exact property line. I looked at Matt. Matt's in the audience, Mr. Toma, and he, they have property that's adjacent to the Pine Grove Town Hall. Staff went up to try to locate that boundary the other day. We were unsuccessful. So I jokingly, you know, looking at Matt, because I need his assistance in locating that property line before the civic group could move forward with that HVAC project that they have listed. And they have three of them listed. But if you have no concerns, we'll let them move on and let staff meet, take the lead on making sure that they're within our property boundaries, they're getting the permits needed, and, and move on with those improvements.
I'm fine with that.
Me, too.
I think the direction, direction, okay, Greg. Or is it easy to action? Direction's probably good. Go forth and do well, John.
Okay, thank you. That was easy. Before we take action, I'd ask any public comment? There are none? Then a motion for the board?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Supervisor Oneto, second by Supervisor Crew. To approve the Pine Grove Civic Improvement Club move forward with the improvements listed on the agenda here, and waive all permit fees, except those that are required to be paid to the state. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Most carries. Thank you. Item five C, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to the Adoption of Chapter seven point three zero to the Amador County Code Regarding Defensible Space Requirements and Hazardous Vegetation and Combustible Material Abatement. Suggested action nearest to waive the reading of the ordinance. Mr. Gelat, do you have any comments?
This is the, the ordinance that was put together by me with the direction from the Ad hoc Advisory Committee. And we, it, it took a long time, because we had some other components in here that, that dealt with required inspections upon the sale and, and notifications, and other things that are required by state law, which got us sort of crosswise with CAL FIRE, and who would do the inspections, and whether there would be a fee or not a fee. So in the end, what is drafted is, is really just really the same requirement for clearing that everyone already has. It's a state requirement. This just includes the county very clearly as an entity that has tools to, to enforce those requirements and to cause abatement, if, if, if necessary, when a homeowner is not compliant.
You have a question on that? Doesn't the state have the same authority?
The state does have, yes, similar authority, but in our discussions with CAL FIRE, their enforcement tool is a criminal case. And they've, they've discovered, you know, they, they get cooperation up to a point from homeowners, but when they don't get cooperation, it, it's difficult to sort of move that enforcement case along, because they have to find a prosecutor or the state attorney general who will, who has time to take that sort of non-criminal case. So they, they find enforcement through the end difficult. And so this just would allow the county to also sort of have an, have the tools to enforce if necessary. Doesn't require the county to do it. And it's, it's not a new, it's not a new, it's not a new requirement. It's not different from what already exists for, for residents in the county.
Okay, so we're not taking over CAL FIRE's job to do the fire inspections, per se? I will say, I was out at a lady's house yesterday. Pretty funny, her and her husband were there, and I guess CAL FIRE just came by. And they had all kinds of little small cedars, which CAL FIRE didn't tell them to cut, which was good. But then you had this one little small pine tree, like eight feet from her house, like a bonsai tree. And you could tell there was no way in this earth she was going to cut that tree. And they told her she had to cut it, and it was like, yeah. It was obvious she was not going to cut her tree down. So I guess that could be a problem, because how do you go, how do you go file criminal charges on a lady in something like that? You can't, and shouldn't.
So, so this ordinance sort of, it, it has the requirement to do the clearing around your home. It doesn't apply to unimproved lots. And the, the way the enforcement is envisioned, it's sort of, any fire district in the county can do inspections pursuant to this ordinance, and, and cite violations. If they don't get compliance on their own, they can refer it to what county, the county has identified Amador Fire Protection District as sort of the, the main enforcement authority. So the, any unresolved violations would, would then go to AFPD, and they would decide whether they move forward, kind of like our current code enforcement officer role. You know, you have the departments that take primary action to get compliance, and then, then if they don't, they'll forward it to the code enforcement officer, who could then move it forward. And then there's an abatement hearing board, and then those are recommendations to, to this board on abatement.
Who would be the, the abatement board?
So the abatement board is, so this sort of creates a, a parallel to what we have now on regular code enforcement cases. And our, our existing abatement board is the one supervisor, one department, and two department heads. This one is a little different, and what we did was, one supervisor, one department head, and one other person with knowledge of sort of the subject matter, which would be either the clearing requirements, or, or fire, or, so that, that's at the discretion of the board. So that would be the hearing abatement board, which then makes recommendations on violations to the Board of Supervisors.
When do we make that decision? Who would be the abatement board?
You, well, the, the, that's a good question. After this goes into effect, you'd have it on your agenda. Typically, the, the appointment is done when the chair does appointments. So it's either the chair or their designee who has to be a supervisor, one other department head, which is up to the board, and then whoever that third person would be, whether it's someone from, you know, it could be someone from AFPD, but it probably wouldn't, you wouldn't want that person to hear a case that came out of AFPD.
Right. Chair will put a fellow member on there that he doesn't want to get re-elected, so. Anyway, any further board comments?
There, there is one, a couple changes I might suggest. I was just going through it again. On, it's Chapter seven point three oh point zero eight zero. It's Notice of Defensible Space Inspection. So this is if an inspection official, which usually is, you know, one of the fire districts or their designees, suspects that any real property may be maintained or permitted in a manner that's prohibited by this chapter, the inspection official. And it says shall, and, and I would, I would suggest that you might want to consider putting may in there, just because, you know, we want to have a little bit of that discretion. Maybe they're not going to start the enforcement right away.
It's in there multiple times. So what you're saying, where it says shall, change that.
Well, that, there are, are other shals that I think should stay in there, but that, that shall is just, you know, it would say, if, so if I'm the inspection official, if I think there's possibly a violation, I have to do an inspection. I think, I, I think you may want that to be a may.
That'd be the same under probably item two there, as far as shall conduct a reinspection.
Well, I think, I think once you've started the process, I think you, you should have to follow through with it. So if, if you've done an inspection under A, and under A one, I think the, the one in number two, they shall conduct a reinspection. I think that, that probably should be in there.
So is this the only recommended change?
That, that one, and then if you, if you jump back to seven three zero one three zero, no duty, no duty to enforce. There's nothing in the sharp, in this part shall be construed as imposing on any enforcement official, which is the chief of AFPD at the county. You may want to include inspection official in there also. So it would say, on any inspection official, comma, enforcement official, comma, the county of Amador, and going on from there.
Okay. Board satisfied with that?
Fine. Was that the only shall that you, you said there might be some others?
No, no, no. That was it. Me, that was the only shall that, there are other shals in the ordinance, but to me, there, there should be shals.
That's the one, okay.
About is's, when does is mean is? Okay. All right. Are we satisfied? Any public comment? All right, board, you're, oops, we have one, Cindy. Morning.
My name is Cindy Graham Boyce. I'm a county resident. This ordinance has been in the works for many years now. And I'm really hoping that you guys will sign this and approve this. Most of you are probably aware that not that long ago, a couple of weeks ago, there was a community chipping event that got derailed by one individual who was very upset at the noise, I guess, for an afternoon. There's other projects that have been derailed because one person refuses to allow anybody to cut one tree. Supervisor Brown was telling me about a road crew project like this. There are several proposed fire breaks that are coming up in our county. And having this ordinance in place, I think, could be persuasive in helping people choose to allow funded programs to put in the fire breaks, rather than them spending their own money to do a minimum of clearance. I, I think this ordinance is overdue, and I, I think it's been well-written. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment, Mr. Heisenbuehl on Zoom? John, go ahead.
On behalf, John Heisenbuehl, Amador Fire Safety Council Board, on behalf of the Amador Fire Safety Council, I want to congratulate the, the board for developing this ordinance, and we're in full support. So we hope you move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members, time for action. Move to approve this. Actually, it's waiving the reading of the ordinance.
Excuse me? Suggested action is waiving reading and scheduled for adoption on May tenth, and move to approve. I'll send that.
Moved by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Oneto. Any further discussion?
Just a long time coming, but it was something we needed to do.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Most carries. All right, my intent is to get through the next two agenda items, because we have quite a few people waiting for those, and then take a break and go to our public hearing. So item five D, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to an Increased Funding Request from the Amador Senior Center for the twenty-two, twenty-three Budget, and Consideration of Continued Funding, the Common Ground Meals on Wheels Program will also be discussed. Senior Center presently gets five thousand, and they're asking for fifteen thousand. The Common Ground's fifteen thousand, but Senior Center presently gets five. I believe, Chris, you would like to ask for more, so if you'd like to come on up, please. Good morning.
Norman, good to see you all again this morning. I was here just a month ago, presenting our accomplishments in the program, and sharing with you some inspiring stories of what the program has been able to accomplish. I even bring you another one this morning. On April fourteenth, one of our drivers approached a client's home, and was, was unable to get a response. And walking around toward the front window of the home, noticed the client sitting in a chair and unresponsive. So our driver immediately deployed the emergency protocol we trained them to, to use, and called nine one one. And our driver was asked to remain on scene, and Sheriff's Department showed up. Entering the home, unfortunately, the client had passed. But that's the goal of our program, be there for our clients. And this client had received a hot meal the day before, and on this day was found to be deceased, unfortunately. But had it been a medical emergency, or something we could have intervened with, that's why we're there every single day. And with a hot, delivered daily meal, as I explained last month, it's more than a meal. And so we're asking for the additional funding to continue to expand the program. It's grown at about thirty-three percent over the last year, and we foresee it growing at the same pace for next year as well. So you have any questions for me regarding the request?
No, but in, in that case, I would say, it's an issue of respect, too. You, you don't want a person who, who's deceased, just sitting in their home. They should be taken care of like any other person respectfully, and laid to rest.
That's, that's perfectly correct. And, and again, gives family members that sense of security that, that their loved one was found immediately. Nobody wants to, to hear that it was, it was days that had passed.
I can compliment you on the food that you guys provide. After the Commission on Aging meeting, you were providing ribs, and those were some delicious ribs. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We have a focus on quality as well. We want our clients to enjoy the meals, be part of the program, so that we can connect them to additional resources. If we serve poor-quality food, or ill-tasting food, then our clients won't participate in the program, and they won't have connection to all those resources as well.
Sure, I, I would echo what Chris is saying. A Rotary Club helped get the Pine Grove area going, and we still have two or three. I had dinner with them last Tuesday night, and they were saying, you've got to fund that. You've got to fund that. They go there, and the food is almost an afterthought after a while. One fellow was saying, the gal, he had, this little lady had a dog, and she couldn't get her outside because her fence was broke down. So he brought tools one week when he was there to fix her fence for her. So there's some hidden benefits there that we're, got to make sure that we see.
The stories are numerous of, of efforts like that. And again, it's, as I shared with you last month, it's more than a meal.
You're saying, too, that you're starting your congregate meals over the center?
Yeah, the congregate meals fortunately just started last Monday, which was great. We're working to open up our congregate site in Ione in Plymouth. We received approval from Area Twelve to do that as well. We received approval from Area Twelve to do that as well, and we'll be opening a new, um, site up in Pioneer as well. That's, that's underway. July first is the target date to get those congregate sites up and running. But, uh, the Senior Center currently has the congregate site open. Seniors are excited because they have social connection again, and they're able to, uh, enjoy a meal with each other's company.
Yeah, I'd go there on, on occasions, and it was always kind of a fun time. I mean, just, I like old people, and they know a lot about history, and you could tell they're very happy, um, meeting their friends.
Any other board questions? Mr. Eily, um, I'm going to go to you because the requests were budgeted for five, but the request for fifteen.
Right, so if you wanted to direct staff to include the additional ten for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we can certainly do that. Uh, if you're, if you were contemplating taking money away from common ground in order to do that, I would say don't re- make that reduction. Common ground was invited today. They could not make it, though they have asked to come to next board meeting. So, uh, we'll be talking to them, but if you're simply going to increase the, the allocation to the Senior Center, certainly you could do that without waiting until next week. Next meeting.
Uh, I didn't see anybody on Zoom, but, and any other public comment, board action?
I wouldn't make a mo- I don't want to take it away from common ground. They, they do their own version of, and well done there, too, but I would, I would like to invest in our seniors another ten, at least ten grand, so I'd make a motion up there for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget from five to fifteen thousand.
I'll second.
Moved in second to take this budget item fifteen thousand dollars. I, I, I agree, it's not, in the big scheme of the budget, it's not a lot of money, but it, it does, has a tremendous effect on, on caring for our seniors. All right, with that, any, uh, further discussion?
The, the only thing is, is that, uh, another one thing Chris always does is, um, asks anybody else that wants to come over and have lunch with the seniors, please do, because, uh, they have a, a whole bunch of questions that they want to talk to people, or they just want to have a conversation with new people, so, and they'll come over and introduce themselves and have a grand old time, and you, you know, it's six dollars, you know, just have lunch, just make a reservation. Thank you, Chris.
All right, with, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, I, I'll oppose, most carries. Um, you got your budget item, but go ahead, Chris.
And don't talk yourself out of it, no.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the consideration and for increasing the funding.
Well, thank you for the job you do with the Senior Center. You've notched it up, notched it up a couple of levels.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll, um, get our next agenda item done. Five E, continued discussion of request for increased funding for the Amador County Chamber of Commerce. Uh, requesting, is asking for a one-time increase from forty to eighty thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And, uh, who's going to speak for the chamber today? Um, there was a request from Supervisor Axe for more financial documentation. I think you, you have, uh, provided some of that documentation.
Yeah, excuse me, we have, yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Toma here, representing, and the president of the Amador County Chamber of Commerce. I have with me today Julie Lyman, our office manager, and she won't, she won't accept the title, but she's our acting director right now, pretty much doing all the, the lifting around the chamber these days.
And birthday girl today?
Yeah, birthday girl? I didn't realize, oh, happy birthday. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Forrester. Um, and with your permission, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also hand out, we, we sent you our, our proposed twenty-two budget expenses, and we've also included kind of a three-year, uh, budget plan, what we've kind of got, you know, planned for the next few years as far as increasing membership and stuff like that. I've got copies here for the board, if it's okay, I can have Julie, uh, hand some out to you right now, if that's all right? Thank you. And what you'll see on there, um, just kind of summarizing it, in, in, in twenty-twenty-one, our current paid membership was down, obviously due to COVID, to just under two hundred members, with an average annual membership cost of around two hundred dollars. Uh, we also had three other sponsors totaling just over thirteen thousand dollars, and we will assume that those will be returning on an annual basis moving forward. Um, for the rest of twenty-twenty-two, our goal is to use those requested, or the requested eighty thousand dollars to hire a qualified executive, uh, officer, and increase office staff time to not only help answer our tourist-related questions that we do get on a, pretty much a daily basis, um, also our current members' requests, but to, uh, help grow the paid membership to two hundred and fifty or more by the end of the year is the goal. Uh, then for twenty-twenty-three, with the help of our executive director and expanding our proposed business outreach, outreach programs, we are projecting an increase to three hundred paid members with a total potential increase of ten thousand dollars. Uh, we would anticipate requesting seventy thousand in TOT funds for that year. And then twenty-twenty-four, we're hoping to increase our membership to four hundred, trying to get it up to the numbers that, you know, the chamber used to be. I don't have any clear numbers, but we've, we've seen numbers anywhere in the four to five, you know, five to six hundred dollar range. So that's our goal in the next two to three years, is to get the chamber back, you know, to where it was, a, a good, healthy chamber.
Four to five hundred member range?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. Um, with the added funding and the-
Matt, what's the average on that, what's the historical average for number of, uh, members of the chamber?
So-
Over the last fifteen years?
Well, and that's where I believe, you know, probably fifteen years ago, we were in that forty, in that five hundred dollar range, uh, member numbers. And then COVID, we, you know, the last two or three years, COVID really kicked it. You know, knocked us down to, to just under two hundred paid where we are today. And we're, we're working to, to get those guys back, and pretty much Julie's, uh, sending out mailers, making phone calls, and for the most part, everybody that we're able to contact is willing to come back.
You know how many businesses are active in the, in the county? You, you need to know what your pool is that you have a chance to, to bring into the chamber. Do you know how many businesses there are countywide?
I believe what we're finding out is of that, for example, you know, I'll, I'll use that four hundred, you know, business member number, most of those are still, some have obviously gone away, but then there's new ones that, that we're finding out that are, that are active and, and, and still out there, so I believe that pool number is going to be even higher than that.
That's kind of the question I had, I mean, how many businesses went under because of COVID?
Right.
If you had any, any idea on that, it seems like not that many in Amador County, really.
As far as businesses gone under?
Yeah.
No, I, I would agree with you, yeah. Now, the member lost, the, the chamber lost probably a couple hundred, yeah, at least, you know, during the COVID.
I think everybody was digging in, trying to survive.
Absolutely. Well, and without, you know, the chamber was a networking tool and, and, you know, meetings and, and, and mixers and gatherings, and when you can't do that kind of stuff, people tend to lose interest, you know. Now that we're hoping to get that back, um, we're hoping to grow those numbers.
I will say, too, um, I love that you're ask, you're asking for eighty thousand, but you're also reducing your ask in successive years, so I, I appreciate that.
And that's, and that's the goal, that's obviously the goal.
Um, Mr. Chair, I think one of the problems is that the county doesn't require business licenses, where you, you want to know how many businesses are in the city of Jackson, you just call City Hall.
That's right.
In Center Creek and Ione, but the unincorporated-
That's a great point.
Which is probably where we, those people need the chamber as much or more than the people who are, like in the city of Jackson downtown, they talk to businessmen every day. Or if you're doing a home business-
Yep.
It's kind of an untapped market for the chamber, I would think.
We agree, and with, with Julie's help, um, you know, it's kind of hard to go through the phone book these days, but that's kind of what she's been doing, you know, and good old Google, just trying to figure out who's still out there and who's available.
That's what you have to do, to increase your membership, you have to identify those businesses out there. I mean, same thing I do with, with an event I run, is I use every avenue I have to identify new people.
Yeah.
Taking the event from twenty thousand to fifty thousand gross, so-
Yep, I agree.
That's what you have to do.
And what we're, what we're finding now, just with our, our couple of mixers we've had so far this year, are members, existing members are bringing in friends and potential members, and we're, and we're building our membership that way. So it's, it's just shows you that the network, the networking is, is working, as far as that goes, so, yeah.
You, you have, uh, non-business members also, right?
Uh, correct.
So what's the cost for those people that want to join?
One hundred, yeah.
And I, I think that's very valuable, I mean, it, it helps the business to spread the word.
We, we do, we do ourselves, yeah, yeah. Um, with that, I'll just wrap up by, the, the board of the Amador County Chamber of Commerce feels very strongly, um, that we do an equal part on a day-to-day basis to help promote and grow our local business and tourism partners. And, you know, once again, every county needs a healthy chamber, and we want to thank you guys for your past support, and hopefully your continued and future support.
I think you're fortunate now that we have a healthy TOT, which TOT was expected to go down during COVID, but it actually went up.
Right.
You say timing is everything.
I have a question for Mr. Eily. Um, you're showing basically so far it's about three hundred and twenty thousand TOT, and, and expected by the, in the budget year to be three ninety?
Correct. If, if it keeps the same pattern as it did last year.
So what are the demands on it? Probably Amber Council Tourism is a, is a big one?
Well, the, um, it's a general tax, it's, it's not a specific tax, just like, um, the TOT goes into the general fund.
Yeah, but what demands is, is there in that budget line item, it's like ACT is probably the biggest one?
ACT, and, and we've held ACT constant at one oh one five, uh, every year, so, um, it hasn't been growing. So there's really no increased demands on that?
So there's adequate money in, in, in there to meet this?
If you want to look at it as a pot, yes, it's not really a pot, but that, that's what I keep saying, is that, that it's not, that aside, if, if we, it's not like if we don't spend it here, it goes somewhere else, it, it supports the general fund.
It's a general tax, but when, when we took it to the voters and went from six to ten percent, the pledge was that we would use that extra four percent to go to tourism, whether that's ACT or Chamber, one way or the other. But I want people to forget that pledge. If we go to the voters and ask them to do something, and they vote specifically on that, and we go sideways on it, why should they vote for anything ever again? So, that's my two, my statement for today, so. Do we have ACT here today to present?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Morning. Morning, Chairman and Supervisors. Uh, I'm Dave Horner, and I'm the Executive Director for ACT. Um, I have some-
Who are you have with you today?
Hi, good morning, everyone, nice to see you again. I'm Kathleen Mahan, I'm the President for ACT.
And I have some, uh, I have some copy that I'd like to present to you guys, so you can come, go through it with me.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, good morning, um, thank you for asking us to come and present today. I wanted to point out that ACT is the nationally recognized destination marketing organization of record for Amador County, and we have been for the last nineteen or so years. We have a proven track record and have positive, positively impacted the local economy through increased visitation. Over the last year, ACT has strengthened our partnerships with Visit California, DMA West, and Gold Country Visitor Association, and that's played a key role in keeping us up to date with the, the best practices of these organizations. It's actually, there's a lot that, that happens in a DMO for, for something countywide. Um, I wanted to go through our key achievements, and this isn't an exhaustive list, but this is, you know, some of the key points that we will bring up. I won't go through them all in complete detail, but in the handout, you have, you know, more detail about each item. One, we're participating in the Amador Hospitality Forum. We were part of it when it was created, um, by the, the Vintners Tasting Rooms initially, um, and in conjunction with the Vintners Association, and ACT, um, is bringing in the rest, you know, the non-wine-related businesses, so hotels, restaurants. Um, and we formed the Access Amador Thursday Program, and Visit Amador volunteered to put up a landing page for that, so that anyone, um, who wants to know who's participating in the Access Amador has a place to find it. We've been participating with the wagon train organizers, and we put up a very detailed event page for them on our website that has the daily routes and everything. I know it starts tomorrow, but they've advertised our Visit Amador page as a, a place for visitors to go and find out the routes. We've done things with Baker Street West in Jackson. We, we did technical support for their Zoom meetings. They had some international Zoom meetings, which are, within the Sherlockian Society, were a pretty big deal. You know, anyone who's into Sherlock Holmes. Um, but we supported them, you know, technically to make sure they could do a good job since it was, you know, bringing Amador out into the, the nation. Um, travel shows, we, we participated in the Bay Area Travel Show to promote Amador to Bay Area residents and suggest that they come visit Amador. Um, we also shared a booth with Calaveras to save money, so it was only half price to attend. Um, we're also participating in the Argonaut Centennial Commemoration, which is happening the end of August, beginning of September. It's, it's recognizing the, the people who were lost in the mine, and we've, it's, it's a very big group of people organizing this, so we're participating, helping with PR, um, and marketing, and we built the landing page for it, which is going to be the hub for the whole event. So it'll be the one place to go to get information as it, as it approaches. It, there's not much on it right now, but as, as we get more information, it'll go there. We've got a new, um, volunteer, we brought a new marketing volunteer who's got an MBA in marketing, which is super helpful. Um, and she's been helping us develop a, a new strategy for this year for website, social, content development, and it's been very helpful to have some help there, because otherwise it's mostly a one-man show. Um, the DMA West Tech Summit, I applied for a scholarship and got it, and was able to go to DMA West in Tucson this year. Um, we only had to pay the airfare, so it was very reasonable, and it was a very, very informative conference. I came back with just presentation after presentation of actionable, um, strategies that are like the state-of-the-art in, um, marketing, in digital marketing, social and web. So that's, that was certainly worth the, the airfare. Um, where was I? Oh, new office in Jackson. This is something that's been brewing for a while, but we haven't been able to talk about it because it was still in escrow. So the, the new owners of the National Hotel in Jackson, back in November, offered us office space right on, uh, Main Street, which would be hard to turn down, and they also see ACT as such a valued partner that they're giving us a great deal. So basically, it'll be thirty percent less than we're paying, paying at Castle Oaks right now, and it will have retail space with, you know, window front, um, right across the street from the National Hotel. So it's one, one main street that has, um, upstairs and downstairs, um, antiques above it, so it's right facing the National Hotel.
Oh, so it's the arcade area?
Uh.
Where Hein and Company would-
No, no, the other side, oh, where Hein and Company used to be.
Where, where they would, where, let me, let me finish, they, where they would run their, some of their, um, estate sale?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um, so anyway, it was something that had been brewing for a while. We were unable to, you know, we're not going to announce something that hasn't closed escrow, because it was all dependent on that. And they closed a week or so ago, and we're taking possession of it this week. So that kind of changes, um, you know, reduces our office costs and gives us retail space to engage with our visitors. And unfortunately, like I said, we have, we haven't been able to make that public until now because of, uh, escrow issue. I'll talk more about that in a minute. The Board of Directors, we've added two new members, Kathy McGowan of the Amador Historical Society, and J.D. Singh from the National Hotel has come on board. They're very supportive of us, and it's nice to have Kathy on board from Amador Historical Society. We also created a new advisory committee, and both of those, the board and the committee, are attached at the back of this document. For your reference, uh, we, we, um, sponsored a Fox Forty TV segment. Um, it was eight minutes long, it was on Destination California, Fox Forty, and it went from the, they, they started in the wine country, it's those two guys, Steve and, I forget the other guy, but they're real characters from Fox Forty- Fox forty, and they came out and did a special, starting in the wine country, went down forty-nine through Amador City, Sutter Creek, and landed in Jackson, and we, they did a whole thing in Baker Street West. They actually put on Sherlock hats and did a whole little skit, you know, because of the amazing venue there. We've done holiday radio ads last year where we featured the, basically the main street shopping districts. It wasn't specific to any one town. It's just like we've got these amazing, you know, holiday decorated districts, and that was in most of December, I believe. And we've also done some member education through our partnership with Visit California. They gave us access to webinars to help our small businesses get more visibility on the web. So basically, we made it available to everyone we could reach, and we even shared it with the Vintners members, and we're going to put it online as part of our training program. But basically, they were, they were trade tricks of the trade for getting your business listing on Google to be up to date and doing all the things that make it actually show up everywhere. So it really has an impact, and if we can get all the businesses to improve that, it improves the whole visibility of Amador County. So it's, you know, that's why it was important for us to get as many businesses as we could, and we will continue to do that, to get them to improve their, basically their online presence through the Google listing. And there's other things that we don't have listed here. I didn't want to make this too long. Moving on to the goals for twenty-two, twenty-three, a couple of them are in progress, so I called it accomplishments and goals because some of them have already begun. The first one is to move into the new office on one main street. It'll be our new headquarters for the organization, and we do plan to open a visitor center there because it's got foot traffic right there. The National Hotel is, everyone goes to that if they visit Jackson, so it's really good location. And we are also going to do some retail because the one thing Amador doesn't have is branded Amador items, and visitors expect that, you know, they go to various places. They want to come home with the hat that, you know, with the name of where they visited. So we want to address that need in Amador by providing that. And also, a lot of local, we'll use local businesses as much as possible for the merchandise to help our local artists and businesses. And over time, we hope the retail sales will offset the labor cost of staffing it. So by putting someone in there, it typically does, so, you know, instead of being a big funding source, it would fund the person who's in charge of visitor services, which would also handle membership and other things, you know, that we definitely need more, more help in labor in general. We rolled out a new ad campaign called The Answer is Amador, and we placed, the reason it's The Answer is Amador because we're putting it in travel guides. So we figure anyone who opens a travel guide's got that question in their head, and we just want to come out and answer it. Answers Amador, find out why at visitamador.com, and we've included a Q R code with that. We put it in the California Road Trip Guide again. We did that last year, and it was very successful. The Sacramento Visitors Guide, which is, you know, very popular in Sacramento. The S F Chronicles Road Trip Insider's Guide, and in Sac Town Magazine's Travel and Entertainment Planner. We were able to negotiate-
Makes it push you. You got a lot of information to cover, so you might want to skim through it.
Thank you. Okay, skipping through some other things we're going to do. I did want to mention the Historic Jackson Business Association just started, which is ironically on Main Street where we will now be a member, and we've been advising them, helping them form, you know, because they need to learn about nonprofits and boards. We plan to do a fundraiser this year. We've found this organization, Flynn Creek Circus, and we want to bring them here for four day performances. They'd be evening. It's a big tent. It's all aerial stuff, no fire, animals. It's just a fun family event where we can bring visitors, one for all the Amador residents and also bring visitors from out of town for overnight stays, and it will also generate funds for us. Yeah, and we're going to hold it at the Italian Picnic Grounds, and we're in closing on all of that. We've got it all booked, but it's not in contract, so that's why we haven't announced it publicly just yet, but within a week or two, that will be all locked in. Okay, skipping down to our requests. So our request for funds this year, we've added thirty-four thousand to it to help fund, and we're asking for a hundred and thirty-six thousand, and the use of funds for that would be payroll for part-time visitor and member services and retail person, and also to help set up the visitor center and a minor retail investment because you need a little bit of nest egg to start, any kind of thing like that. So that's what we're asking for. The next page, I wanted to get to, I wanted to provide some feedback from your questions from the last Board Meeting. One of them was you were curious about our mission statements, and so I grabbed the latest mission statement from each of our website, and I wanted to read them to you. Amador Council of Tourism, to actively increase awareness and visitation to Amador County, benefiting the local economy while providing unified harmony with public and private entities. And the Chamber of Commerce mission from their homepage is the Amador County Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to growing local businesses by cultivating relationships, encouraging community involvement, and fostering economic growth. And I think our missions reflect our roles in the county for businesses, so they know, you know, which organization does what. I was going to highlight the fact that A C T being the destination marketing organization of record brings us all kinds of resources that just any other organization would not have. You know, because we're a D M O, Visit California opens up their research gates and gives us access to things, co-op things. The report that I'll give you this Friday that shows the tourism, the Dean Runyon Report I shared last year, that shows how we perform year over year for the last ten years from economic impact of tourism in general. As far as their request to, one of the Chamber's main justifications last time was really to hire an executive director position, and that was just confusing to us because, just because if you look at our missions, you know, the T O T dollars is tourism promotion dollars. So for that to go to hiring an executive director just seems, it seems misplaced from our perspective because our job is to promote tourism and that, you know, so we see the T O T dollars with a clear purpose. And, but we remain committed to working with the Chamber Converse, and we'd actually like to strengthen our lines of communication because there is a lot of things we can do together. There is a lot of overlap in membership, but for different reasons. I mean, members come to the Chamber for local business, networking and community and help, and members come to us for education on promoting their business outside and for promoting Amador in general.
Your two statements are a little bit in conflict with each other, just as far as the cooperation, coordination together, you know, I mean, it may have been written a little better.
Okay. I apologize. I mean, I just wanted to emphasize that we know, we want the Chamber to be funded. It's just a matter of, you know, is the T O T dollars the right way to do it? I mean, I think that sums up the-
I think there's enough money to go around this year. I'm not sure, what is the historical amount that A C T has been receiving? Hundred and five?
Hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars, although they are requesting an increase.
What is the, what are the amount of T O T dollars we have this year?
We estimate, I think, three ninety. And Supervisor Onetto's question, so the Chamber, the A C T, and the fair are the entities that we fund out of the promotions budget, and I think that's what you were asking about.
Yeah, and so even funding those, there's still a fair amount left over.
Correct.
I mean, I would look at maybe putting some of dollars towards, maybe doing some road repairs so we can get people here without blowing out tires.
Nothing wrong with blown tires now, Brian. Nothing wrong with blown tires. Back to life.
I'm the tire guy. I forgot what business you're in. I thought you were.
Don't resist, Mr. Chair.
Well, any other Board comments? Are you going to say anything specifically? I'd like to, Athleen, do you have anything?
Well, no, I just wanted, again, to kind of echo what Dave said. We absolutely support one another and each organization, and it is a hard thing to put to paper of clarification. I think as we've come to you over the years, there is a bit of a where does each fall? And so I think what Dave was trying to clarify was that we each want to promote, so we're spending each other's dollars to the best of the benefit. So if we have the resources to really help with tourism, then Chamber can use their dollars to really help with the local businesses, and we can work more closely without having to overlap necessarily in that sense, I think is what we were trying to articulate.
Inherently, there's going to be some overlap.
Right. I mean, inherently, yes.
There's nothing wrong with a little bit of overlap because it basically just reinforces your position you're trying to make.
Absolutely.
And absolutely, we recognize that they do get calls. There's still, you know, there are still people out there that do turn to the Chamber. We're not, we're not trying to deny that, and so we get a lot more calls, and Visit Amador is the hub, and it's becoming more recognized as the place to go for visitor information.
I think it'd be helpful. It sounds like, I think, two organizations have talked about in the past, and nothing happened, so maybe never will, but if you could ever combine, seems logical.
Seems logical. I'm not sure.
I understand that.
Not sure that perception is correct, but.
No, it, I said, I did not say it was doable. I said it seems logical.
I'd like to take some public comment before we-
I just have one quick comment I want to make. So I'm looking at your actuals from twenty-twenty-one, and you had a net income of thirty-seven thousand, which is almost the request, the additional request you're making. Hold on. But it also looks like in your projected budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, you're increasing your advertising and marketing budget by, you know, by three times, or so you're going from roughly twenty-two thousand to sixty-two thousand, so forty thousand increase. So that's really, you know, you could think of it that way. That's what the extra additional money is for that additional advertising, so.
The answer to both of those, the first one is because our accounting is a calendar year, so to do that report, that's the calendar year, and since you fund in the middle of the year, that leftover is our funds through this. So the first one's calendar year, the second one is your fiscal year.
Okay.
So that's why. So that forty carries over and gets us through to July when we receive funding again. So that explains that, and the advertising going up is because we held off highly on advertising during COVID. You know, we didn't want more people here at that time, and the advertising would have been wasted because people weren't traveling. So now that that's lifted, we've got to do a little bit of overtime with the advertising to get back to twenty-nineteen levels. And so ramping up the advertising and marketing is to, it's a little bit of catch-up, but it's also our primary goal as an organization.
I'd like to take some public comment now. Any other person want to speak at this time? Okay, Board members, anybody on Zoom? No? All right. There's a request from the Chamber for eighty thousand and requests from A C T for one hundred and thirty-six thousand. Discussion.
How much does the fair get, Chuck? Roughly?
Two thousand, just for the-
I think it's five thousand for the, for the Miss Amador.
At two thousand is what we're showing.
There was one year we gave the fair more when they were putting the building together, but that was just a one-year spike.
I'm inclined to fund both requests, but I would like to see both entities provide next year real metrics to show, you know, give a report, detailed report on how that funding was spent and, you know, try to have real data that shows some significant improvement or changes that's benefiting tourism in the, in Amador County.
And if we're going to show, I agree with you, if we're going to show those metrics, I would like those delivered to us so they can go into the Board Packet and we have time to analyze those.
Yeah. You know, the Chamber has also some leeway because only a third of your businesses are tourist-related, so it can be strictly economic growth and development. So if you're doing seminars or training or something that helps businesses do better, then that's certainly justifiable.
Well, I think we, first, I want to commend A C T for moving into Jackson with a visitor center. I thought that was a good move, but I was rather disappointed that they commented they didn't think that they should use T O T funds for an executive director because their money, their payroll's forty-five thousand, and they only get thirty-four that's not T O T related, so they use some of it for that. But it goes to a deeper problem of the T O T Chamber, and I thought we asked the Chamber to come back with a number of members. Do we know how many members in A C T? Have they grown theirs? Has their membership gone down? So before we give them any money, any increase, because they get the lion's share to start with, I think we need to look at their membership. I mean, this is a good presentation, but do they have forty members or four hundred? I don't have any idea. I would like to know that.
It seemed like there was a number in here. Maybe, David, could you answer that? Come on up.
Did I just miss it?
I thought there was a number in there.
Current membership numbers in there. It did fall off through COVID, just like it did for the Chamber, and we just started a big campaign to bring back all of our previous members, so that's about a pool of a hundred or so. I think we have sixty that are in the paid column right now, and most people are, that we've sent renewals to are renewing, like the Chamber said, people are coming back and they want to get back and engaged and involved. So we can increase that a certain amount, you know, all the businesses that want to be part of A C T, which is most every tourism-related business, and so we can increase that number. But it's, we only charge a hundred and fifty for membership, and we have about five or six premium members at five hundred that get a little extra benefits, but we can grow it certain.
So at full bore, you might be three hundred members?
I, that might be, that might be a reach, but certainly two hundred.
Two fifty?
Yeah.
All right. I think too, what you have too is A C T is probably a tourism promotion organization with, you know, with businesses in it, and I think the Chamber is, it's kind of a business-centric organization that does do some tourism promotion too. So they kind of almost have similar but dissimilar goals, or mission, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think the main message you hear today, I would not utter one comment in the future that even is perceived that could be negative. We want to see the two organizations working together and try and get the best job done for our Amador businesses and for tourism together.
We agree with that.
Okay. You know, one other thing is seeing that both of you guys are in Jackson, maybe you guys can, you know, live together. Might be a long-term goal.
Our space is pretty small, but yeah. We intend to open in Plymouth as soon as that becomes available too, and whether we keep one in Jackson and in Plymouth, I mean, obviously, we need visitor center on both sides of the county, we think, so.
Okay.
I wouldn't dilute your efforts too much.
Yeah, well, it's not in the short term. That's more like two, three years.
Yeah. Looking for the Board for Motion Supervisor, actually, you had a thought or-
We got any Zoomers? Do we have to do Zoomers?
No, there's no Zoomers.
I'll make the motion then to approve the funding of the Chamber's request for eighty thousand dollars one time for this year, and then the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then the Amador County Council of Tourism in the amount of, was it a hundred and thirty-six thousand? And I want to see, you know, report metrics next time, shows what the people are getting for the funding that we're giving you.
Do a second.
I'll second that. And under discussion, I will say, I think money comes in from tourism dollars, so there's adequate money to fund it. I think also, I'd like to see some of that, I know it's going to the general fund, but we do need some road equipment too, so I'd like to see some of those dollars go that direction.
Well, I agree. I think, I think the people that are, you know, coming into the county visiting are driving on a road, so, you know, it only makes sense.
These are a one-time?
Always one time because you never know what the county's going to do.
Well, no, that A C T's been guaranteed a hundred and one thousand forever, ever since that thing passed, so you're not upping it to a one thirty-six annually. It's just this one time.
As the Chamber is one time at eighty.
Well, the Chamber- Well, the Chamber understands that. You know, with a one oh one and twenty-five, a one oh one and thirty-five, and so we're going to raise the Chamber, but we're going to give ACT as much.
Well, I think your point's well made, Pat. I, I would think it's one, it's one time right now.
Yeah, I just want to see good reporting, you know, and showing us what, showing us and the, and the public what you're doing for the funds.
All right, um, there's a motion, a second on the floor. Everybody understand the motion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carries. With that, we're going to take a ten-minute break, about a ten-minute break. We'll be back at eleven fifteen for our public hearing. Matt?
Just want to say thank you, gentlemen, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll call the meeting back to order and go through our ten thirty public hearing. Sorry, we're a little bit late.
That is quite all right. Good morning.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. We're asking for you to approve the issue to issue the certificate of merger. This is for Matthew and Angelina Looper. They're looking to combine their two parcels so that it is easier to make a future sale, more simple. It will also benefit them for tax bills and homeowners association billing.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any public comments? There are none. Board members?
Close public hearing.
Moved in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now for the approval of the issue of the certificate of merger. I move.
I got it again.
By Onetto, second by Crew to approve the issuance of the certificate of merger. Is there any further comment? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to our regular agenda. And item five F, question and possible action relative to request from ACRA to increase the annual contribution by Amador County from five dollars per capita to six fifty per capita in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And Justin, good morning.
Good morning, supervisors. So just dive into some, some basic reasoning behind the request?
Sure. Give your title.
Oh, yeah. Justin Howard, Executive Director for Amador County Recreation Agency. So just to take a step back, to sort of give a multitude of reasons behind this request, you know, ACRA is a JPA, and when the JPA, this Joint Powers, was formed, the JPA deemed that five dollars per member, membership fees, which kind of creates our core funding, was an adequate amount back in two thousand and nine, which it was in two thousand and nine. Just to use a few baseline numbers, you know, just sort of cross-sectional approach from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-one, which is the most recent data, you know, when it comes to just labor cost, minimum wage, at that five dollar membership fee was, was eight dollars per hour. Now we're at fifteen dollars per hour. Working with the county assessor here, we kind of found some numbers in terms of inflationary data using the California Consumer Price Index of two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-one, about just over thirty-three percent. So that being said, the, you know, the purpose of that membership fee in providing that, that sort of core operational funding for us, that six fifty number over the five dollar number is basically, is, is the equivalent of, of what I believe and what the data shows that five dollars would be worth in two thousand and twenty-two. So as I'm moving forward, I'm asking for that increase, just so that way we can continue with our, our mission to provide, you know, quality recreation and, and park services to the county. I'm happy to elaborate any further if, if anybody has any questions.
Questions, Supervisor Onetto?
Yeah, I have one. Are you getting, have you or are you looking to get increases from the cities?
Yes. So, so it's, it has to be a unanimous decision. So the way that I'm going about it is, you know, the unincorporated county, you know, which I believe is, is over twenty thousand of our population, and having the, the backing of the Board of Supervisors gives that much more compelling evidence when I present to those respective city councils here in the coming weeks.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Right, board members?
Well, I would make a motion to approve the, the budget increase, the per capita increase to six dollars and fifty cents.
Second? This looks like it would be ongoing from, until the board would decide to make a change up or down, so.
True. And if Supervisor Forster, if I could comment on that as well, you know, making that move to six fifty sort of, you know, allows for me to not have to then come next year with another drastic request because now we're leveling where we need to be, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it would mean a lot, though, if the cities would agree to it also. Historically, there's been one city that's always been a holdout and claims poor. So it would be nice if all the cities would, would say we're in.
Yeah. And that's, and that's really what has to happen from my standpoint. So just, like I said, just, you know, the power in numbers of having an endorsement by the Board of Supervisors representing a large portion of the increase, at least from conversations I've had, that would, would actually hold a lot of weight.
Yeah. I mean, the city I'm talking about is Ione, which I represent. But, you know, part of their other issue is that they have a large park in Howard Park that gets a tremendous amount of use. So what does ACRA do with the city right now? I mean, you don't do any maintenance or anything on the park itself, correct?
Uh, no maintenance, just, uh, the main, the main contributions for the city of Ione would be in terms of our recurring programs that we have sort of at the golf course and of course, the pool program. But we do have those regional fees that we collect, and Howard Park being a regional park would be able to collect some of those fees with, you know, justifiable projects.
Yeah, I think some of their argument on, on Howard Park is well taken because they, they do a lot of maintenance and have a lot of kids there. But at the same time, everybody should be in the game equally.
I agree a hundred percent. And, and the conversations that I have had with the city of Ione have sounded generally supportive. And like I said, I'll, obviously, I'm going to have the same conversation with their city council as well. You know, part of the reason for this increase is, as I work on sort of a mass rollout of programs throughout the county, including South County areas that historically haven't seen a lot of Amador Recreation programming, this is going to help stretch it that much further. So we do have a few things.
Try to go to a city council meeting where they don't have a bunch of controversy going on.
Yeah. So I think I'll be on the first one in May. That's the plan.
You know, Justin, it might be good in the future to come back before this board to just, just give an update of what you've been doing. You're a new executive director. You're coming up on your one-year mark as being that new executive director. I know you're getting a lot of things just kind of off the ground again. So it might be good to, um,
Oh, yeah.
Kind of share some of the things, you know, again, to Supervisor Forster's question about what's going on around the county. How would Ione residents benefit? Also, I know that pickleball seems to be a big, big deal, and you're going to put together some leagues. And I know Ione has pickleball courts, and I think Jackson does too. So, so, uh, and then they're talking about them up in Jeff's district. Is that right?
They're working at it. They want to try it. Yeah. We've had a lot of core kind of interest focus groups that have had a really lot of good feedback. But I definitely would take that advice from you Supervisor X. I'd be happy to do a presentation to sort of check in just on what's going on, you know, sort of a, a cross-sectional approach of what we've accomplished in the last year because there are a lot of great things going on, and they'll continue to happen.
Personally, I'd have been happier to a dollar a head increase. Dollar and fifty's kind of painting me a little bit.
Well, the one thing I can add is that he's, you know, Justin is doing extra stuff right now. For the, for the up country, we've got this Molly Joyce property that we've had forever as ACRA. And there's a group that's out there trying to work with the ACRA Board to make hiking trails. So we're, we're doing stuff. We're going forward. So it's, things are happening, you know. The, the pickleball's the funny part of it, but, you know, it's, it's all these other, other things that we're trying to propose and, and put forward.
And to just sort of, sort of maybe further clarify for you Supervisor Onetto, was those two metrics that, that we sort of went off with, you know, of looking at two thousand and nine, you know, of an eight dollar minimum wage as one parameter. Obviously, you know, if we used those same metrics, it would be, you know, closer to a ten dollar request. So I thought using that inflationary index was, you know, sort of landed right at the, you know, so thirty percent, over thirty-three percent of that six fifty number, and it just will go that much further towards our, you know, our goal for the county.
I, I saw your numbers, and I mean, it was realistic numbers you used too, which I do appreciate.
Oh, yeah.
All right. We have a motion, second on the floor. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, we'll go to item five G, Disaster Livestock Access Program. Talks about establishing a program and allow designated individuals access to areas that may otherwise be restricted due to evacuation order so that livestock can be removed from high danger. Eric?
Ag Commissioner Eric Mayberry, and with me is Deputy Ag Commissioner Barry Clark. So the Disaster Livestock Access Pass Program is one that was authorized by, by AB eleven oh three to facilitate ranchers to care for their livestock during and after a wildfire or natural disaster. I won't get into too much details about the program because you guys have the packet there. But I will like to emphasize, I'm not asking you for money today. We will not be charging the ranchers any money. We will be absorbing this into just our regular agriculture budget, and it'll be paid for by just general fund. I do have letters of support from our sheriff. He was not able to be here today. The Farm Bureau Cattlemen's Association is here today, and I will let her speak for herself. I also have the, the Farm Advisor Scott Onetto that is assisting us with the training portion of it. In January first, the Fire Marshal is going to have an official training program that they've been directed by AB eleven oh three to come up with. But it was felt that we did not want to wait until January to get a program going in this county because there is a fire season between now and then. So the UC Cooperative Extension has come up with some more training programs for other county, for other counties, and they said that they would be happy to do so for us. So they will be doing the training aspect of it for this year, and then next year, whatever the Fire Marshal comes up with, we're hoping that they'll grandfather in our existing training program as, as written, and we'll continue with it.
If not, if not, you'll be coming back and asking for money?
Well, no, it just, it'll be like the number of hours. Like, for instance, ours is a four-hour program. They may say that we have to have an eight-hour program, for instance. Some of the content may be changed or whatever, but.
I, I think it's good you're getting the jump on it.
That, 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 that is our hope. So if, if we are able to get this going, there's no reason why we can't get it going. Kind of quickly, I talked to Scott in the hallway today, and we could perhaps get that training going in about a month and then issue the passes shortly thereafter. My son is a firefighter, and he's already packing his bags, getting ready for the fire season, which is imminent. So all these reins have been great, but that sometimes just adds fuel to the inevitable fires that we get in June through August.
Board questions?
I've got a question.
Oh, thanks, too. Supervisor Brown?
Uh, my question is, so, you know, ETA, this is something that they do on an ongoing basis right now.
Mm-hmm.
So is this going to kind of license them in aspect?
Well, so what, this is for large commercial operations. So somebody that has two cows or a couple of horses or, or, you know, some goats or whatever, those can be removed, taken to the fairgrounds and taken care of pretty easily. But if you have a thousand head of cattle, you can't take those to the fairgrounds. You know, there are safety issues, plus just moving that much livestock is going to be blocking the roads that first responders need to be using. So usually, the, the advice is to kind of shelter them in place. They will usually go in and cut some fences, provide water so that the animals can move to water, provide feed. Because, again, like in the Butte Fire, there were situations where the, the fire burned through fairly quickly, that, you know, the cows can move. They're not like trees that, you know, they get out of the way when the fire's coming through. But then they move, go back to where they're used to being, and, you know, everything's black and burned. So, you know, the alternative is to bring in like helicopters and drop hay from helicopters or whatever. So.
We're not, we're, you know, with a shelter in place, we're not talking about moving them out like ETA does. We're just talking about allowing people to go behind the lines to take care of the animals.
Yeah, that, this program is for large operations with more than fifty head.
Okay.
Um, where it's, it's not feasible to move them out in almost all cases.
Again, this, um, you know, but it takes training, as you're talking about.
Right.
And kind of licensing to go through there. But ETA kind of wants to do the same thing to a point, you know, when they're going back and getting things and going. So would this be combined, you know, this training work for them to allow them?
No.
Okay.
You know, cow fire does have a training program for other people, water tenders, you know, bulldozer drivers or whatever. And I think it's like eight or twelve hours of train. So ours is going to be lighter weight than that. And it specifically is designed not for people to go and help fight the fire or anything like that.
Right.
It's just go and feed your cows, get out, and don't touch anything hot on your way in or out, and stay out of our way, is what the cow fire people are, are telling me. For those operations, I believe that animal control already has a relationship with the groups that you're talking about. And I'm not getting in their way. They're a completely parallel program, and that has nothing to do with this. This is really for large commercial operations, and, and it won't, it won't affect what they're doing at all. They already have been doing what they've been doing for many years.
Right.
And, and apparently fairly successfully at that. And so we don't want to, we don't want to interfere with that in any way.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
A question I'd have is, you, you kind of answered the question. You mentioned horses, but it's nowhere in your, in your literature received that horses qualify.
We don't eat horses, so they are not livestock.
Uh, USDA said they are.
Uh, USDA specifically says that horses are not livestock.
Let's see. So, so, okay.
Horses are one of those kind of things with, within farming operations where they can consider to be part of an agriculture operation, but they are not considered to be an agricultural commodity.
Okay.
Because we don't.
Code of Federal Regulations had them down as livestock.
What's that?
The Code of Federal Regulations had them down as livestock. And I guess what I'm looking at too is sometimes you have people have horses that are really expensive.
Right.
And the last thing they want to do is be taking ten or fifteen horses out somewhere trying to find a home for them.
I respect that.
You know how horses are when they, a lot of times when people have horses, there's not a lot of grass around. I mean, they eat everything, so it's not, I don't see why you couldn't leave horses in place at times and go in and just check on them.
But horses are not in this definition.
The, the, correct. Horses are not covered by this program. And again, a quirk of the regulations, bees are, because bees are considered to be livestock by USDA.
Okay. So there's no way to add horses in?
Are you talking about by the numbers? I mean, he's talking over fifty head or, or twenty-five cows?
Well, I, I saw that. Or fifty rabbits. I mean, you put fifty rabbits in a pickup. You can't put fif- you can't put ten horses in a pickup.
It doesn't look like we can add horses in by the definition. Does not look like we can add horses by the definition.
I, I can ask that question. To be honest with you, it's not been asked, but I don't know anybody that has more than fifty horses.
No.
Be interested in this program. Most of those people, to be honest, they want them moved out. They would not want them to.
Okay.
They're going to either move themselves or have a cart helping to assist or some of, one of the other animal rescue, animal rescue group.
Yeah, that's ETA. That would be go get them. A cart only receives.
Supervisor Onetto, I, I'll be honest with you, I did not consider this. I, I didn't consider.
And I'm not saying fifty head of horses. The way you can lower that number, what I'm looking at, what I'm thinking about. I mean, there's probably less than five places got fifty head of horses in this county.
Well, according to the current AB eleven oh three, their regulation is for fifty and above. I do know that myself and others are working to change that for next year to include agricultural commodities as well, because currently it's livestock only. And, and if that were, if that were to happen, and, and if, and we could discuss the horse issue at that time as well.
Yeah.
I do know that there's other counties where horse breeding operations are a major, major thing.
Eric, would the value of the horses, you know, be another way of considering or using as a metric, you know, because if it's a commercial, you know, I'm not a horse person, but.
Sure.
You know, some of the horses can be very expensive. I don't know if people raise racehorses or anything like that.
Again, the way that AB eleven oh three just said head, and so whether it's rabbits or cattle or whatever.
So you're kind of, you're kind of stuck on that then, yeah.
Okay.
That's the way it was written.
All right. I, I would like to see the, the numbers go down a little bit because my wife's got about twenty-five head of sheep.
Right.
And it's not going to be easy getting them off-site real fast.
And sheep are particularly loaded ground and flammable, from what I've heard.
So, anyway, I'd like to see that number lowered too. But we'll see. And, you know, a lot of producers have smaller numbers of animals at numerous locations. I guess you could look at, if they say cumulatively, I have a hundred head of cows.
Right, exactly. And, you know, all these things were brought into the considerations and, and really the fire resource people, you know, they were trying to find a compromise that would limit the numbers of people going in and the number of trailers on the road that they want access to with their fire equipment. And so fifty was what it was decided.
And they're probably not going to go out.
It's purely, I mean, it's, it's an arbitrary number. I told you, it's arbitrary.
They're not going to go out and count them.
All right, you can't speak from back there. You have to come on up.
Uh, Cattlemen's Association, this is Amy.
Hi.
Please identify yourself.
My name's Amy Waters White. I just wanted to clarify on your twenty-five head of sheep that your wife had. If they were in utero or bred, they are now considered fifty.
I, I get that, but they not, they are not all bred sometimes.
Absolutely, they are.
Yeah. At that time of emergency, maybe that's the case.
We'll just fabricate a little.
[laughing]
Okay, can we move this along?
Talk to your, your ram.
We'll get some answers on the horses, right? And the guinea pigs and anything else?
Exactly.
All right.
That's the program as it stands. I'm not saying that there's not a lot of room for improvement. There certainly is.
Right.
But we wanted to get in early.
Right.
And get a program going to get it grandfathered in for next year.
I got it. Any other public comment?
Hi, thank you. My name's Amy Waters White, and I'm here on behalf of Amador, El Dorado, and Sacramento Cattlemen's Association. I am writing to confer our strong support for the proposal put forward by Ag Commissioner Eric Mayberry to create a disaster livestock ag pass for Amador County. This program will provide an effective and safe plan for livestock operators to have access to their livestock during an emergency. By planning ahead, the program will enable livestock operators and public safety officials to address any safety concerns to ensure all parties remain safe during an emergency. It is our commitment to work together, not against each other, and allow first responders to perform their duties while allowing livestock owners to safely move cattle out of harm's way, avoid death, and decrease the likelihood of severe economic, economic loss. We greatly appreciate staff's work to propose this program. We are looking forward to establishing a well-executed working relationship with everyone involved. We really appreciate the proactiveness that we have with Eric Mayberry and getting this on board with our fire season looming ahead of us. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Cindy.
Good morning still. Cindy Graham Boyce, Community President. I am in support of this program. I, I think it's going to happen all over the state. I would like to see this county involved in it. I'm only aware of one potential issue that has occurred in the past that I would like the program in this county to address, and that is there has been unpleasant interactions between people trying to get into their animals and first responders because there is a pass, but it is not a family pass. The owner who took the class can't give it to one of his ranch hands and expect them to be able to get in when he can't get in. And it has led to some very unpleasant confrontations. And, and so I would like to see this program emphasize that every individual that wants to go beyond must take the class and have their own individual pass.
Good comments, Cindy.
That is exactly right. So if, if you had three employees, ranch hands, or people like that, they would actually have to, training, have their own training.
Also, Mr. Mayberry, on page one seventy-four, the very top line, you probably need to, it says you would need to notify your interest in using. Probably change that to rather notify express or something. It doesn't read quite right.
Notify express?
Page one seventy-four. Need to express your interest rather than notify. You'll see it when you look at it.
Yeah, made that note.
Yeah, and it should really be stressed in the class. What Ms. Graham Boyce said is, this is not playtime. And, you know, because people in those industries have a tendency to, their families come along because their families help with a lot of the work. But I think in this circumstance, you may not want, probably less is more in this case for safety reasons.
Right.
Okay. Board members, your action?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve the livestock pass.
Approve the resolution authorizing the Agricultural Commissioner to establish a Disaster Livestock Pass Program.
That'll work.
Assistant with AB eleven oh three.
I can't find my paper, but thank you.
Motion by Supervisor Onetto, second by Supervisor Crew. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. And good job. I appreciate you being proactive on this. All right, item five H, Discussion Possible Action Relative to a Letter from the Board of Supervisors in Support of an Application for Grant Funding for a New Fire Station in Pine Grove. The funding would be coming from the state of California if approved. Chief White, do you want to speak to this quickly?
Good noon or morning still, I guess. Chairman Forrester, members of the Board of Supervisors. Yeah, we're humbly seeking a letter of support for a project that's been long overdue. This is something that Chief McCart had the vision to purchase the land and get the original architectural design done. And since then, costs of construction have more than doubled, and we do have an infrastructure fund. So working with So, um, working with our, our labor group and members of our Board of Directors have, um, met with Assembly members seeking a request of state funds from the unprecedented surplus, uh, funds. And, uh, roughly sixty percent of our call volume is Pine Grove and above up country. So this goes a long way to improve the, um, equity of services and to, um, really address an area, provide us with a, a more modern facility, one that could house additional apparatus, provide a community room, and serve as an up-country command post. So I genuinely appreciate your support. We've already received over a dozen letters of, uh, stakeholders' support, and I think that, you know, yours would be, uh, amongst those most influential. So, uh, my request is that we, uh, uh, receive a letter of support from the, um, County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
And.
Steve, it's a hundred percent funding, there's no match for.
Yeah, there's no match required. However, you know, the skin in the game is we've already purchased land. We've already, uh, paid and contracted for the, uh, architectural design of the, uh, the project. That was something that was originally done twelve years ago. I just had those plans updated and, uh, but we've main, we have owned the, uh, the property for this for over twelve years now.
Could we get those expenses back?
You know, what the request was for, um, yes, the cost of updating the, the plans, the, any cost of sequo and the cost of construction. So the actual ask amounts to nine million and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
We're putting the land up?
Yes. And it is part of what would normally be called the BRIC program, the Building Resilient Infrastructure for Communities. So, uh, rural communities like ours.
Did you say nine million, thirty-eight thousand?
That's correct.
Uh, how big is this fire station?
It's just, it, it's a standard two-bay fire station. Cost of construction from when the original, uh, plans were done till now has doubled. More than doubled in twelve years.
And, uh, uh, Walt, um, Chairman Forrester needs to sign that letter today, right? Because it's going out in the packet today, so it's imperative if, uh.
I've signed it once, but I asked for some corrections after that, so they have to change it, so.
Okay.
Okay, it does need to be submitted today. Uh, I think we are on the agenda either this afternoon or, uh, tomorrow for, um, and this would just go to our state legislator. If, uh, legislatures have, if approved, then would be sent to the governor's off, uh, office for, um, signature.
Alright, any further discussion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, or should we, is, do we have any public comment, actually?
I'll take them, make the motion first.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the chairman's signature on a letter of support for a new fire, for funding from the state of California for a new fire station in Pine Grove.
Second. Proven second it. Is there, uh, any further, further discussion, any public comment? Everybody thumbs up from the back of the room.
He approves.
Yeah. So, uh, no zoomers? That, uh, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That's, uh, five oh, thank you. Believe it was five oh, right? Was that an affirmative, right?
Okay. I will say I'm shell-shocked by the price. Who's price?
Shell-shocked to the price of the jail, too, the way it's going up, so. Alright, thank you. We'll go on, uh, to only a couple more agenda items. Item five I, American Recovery Act, State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, Expenditure Update and Revenue Loss Options Available Under the Final Rule. Morning, Kim.
Uh, Kim Holland, Budget Analyst. Um, I, as you have before you, you can, uh, see the expenditures, uh, that have, we've incurred to date, um, against the approved budget. Um, do you have any questions regarding any of the expenditures?
Let me, let me jump in here and give, kind of set the table a little bit. So when, when we set this budget for how we were gonna spend the, the ARPA funds, we were going to, um, you know, things were happening, happening fast and furiously. And since, uh, we set this up, there have been other sources of money for public health that have come in, uh, other demands that have gone away, uh, and, and things have changed. And we, we really need to, uh, to reevaluate what we've got set, approved so far, where you want us to go with, with what we've got left. And one big, uh, item that, that's out there is that, uh, the federal government has actually listened to the small counties and the cities and has put an option in there for, uh, for replacement of revenue that would make life a lot easier and remove a lot of the, uh, documentation required to, uh, to, uh, deem the, the remaining funds, what we haven't spent so far, uh, as revenue replacement. The, uh, they've, they've set what they call a, a standard allocation now for, um, for, uh, revenue replacement. Anybody who has lost money, anybody who has, uh, actually received, um, a, an allocation from the ARPA can deem up to ten million dollars to be, uh, revenue replacement. Uh, no questions asked. It becomes very similar to their standard deduction on your income tax. The, uh, they don't ask any questions about the basis for those deductions. So it's, it's an option two. The option one is to go and demonstrate all that your actual losses. Option two is to take the ten million dollar standard deduction, or what they call a standard allocation. The, uh, uh, if you, and since our allocation was only seven point seven million to begin with, the entire thing would fall under a revenue replacement. If the board wanted to go that way, uh, then that would allow you to do with it whatever you wanted to do within the limits of, you know, the law. So, um, uh, I'm, if, there's still, there's some money in here that we, uh, we believe should be reallocated. Some things that we had re-reserved, uh, for uses that we don't believe are gonna be needed. Uh, we still have the five hundred thousand in there for the nonprofits, that's gonna be needed. The three hundred thousand for the drinking water is gonna be needed. Um, the, uh, broadband, the thirty thousand for the Last Mile Project, uh, that's still, still needed. Um, a lot of the other things are not gonna be needed. The other question for you, uh, and you don't have to answer this today if, if you're not ready to, but, uh, the, uh, how much do we want to allocate for, um, for water infrastructure improvement projects? I know there are a number of small and large water, uh, agencies in the county that are interested in, uh, asking us for some of these funds. And the question is, uh, how much do we want to allocate? How much should we tell them is available? And how do you want to go about selecting which projects are approved? So anyway, that's a lot of questions to ask you all at once, but, uh, ready for some, some feedback.
What was the, uh, drinking water infrastructure transmission?
That's to, uh, that's to, to bring water down, uh, Buena Vista down to the landfill.
Okay, got it.
Is that that whole three hundred thousand then?
Yes, yes. That's for, uh, design and construction.
Okay, so I guess, um, so your question is, do we want to put some money towards water projects just in the small, small districts, and possibly one of the, one large one? Um, and I also, but, so I guess this would, some of this money would be available for roads or road equipment?
If you took the eleven, uh, the revenue loss standard deduction.
Yes.
That would open the door for, uh, the flexibility.
Yeah, I know, and that's, I, I think we'd be silly if we didn't. Um, yeah, I'd like to do that.
Hold on just for a second. Do, can I, do I need to leave at this point?
I, I, I think you need to recuse yourself. If you want to go into the audience and, and make a pitch for any particular allocation, you can do that. Um, but when they're deliberating, after they hear from the public, including yourself, you'd have to leave the room.
Because the one thing, um, reasoning behind this is that I'm Chair of First Mace Metal Water Association. So as we're talking about water, this is where I've got to have to decline. But what I'm gonna ask is can we kind of separate, you know, water from other subjects, you know? And so that I can have a conversation dealing with the other subjects on here.
Sure. Oh, I don't think we can do that.
Be nice.
That, that would be fine.
There's just, uh, oh, yeah.
I was, I was joking. Except for water right now. Infrastructure, water, okay? Right. Now, this is something out of totally left field, excuse the baseball terminology. Um, if we're able to do part of what we're doing, as you guys have all known, I've been dealing with my baseball field up there at, uh, Pioneer Park, and this is where I'm trying to advocate for something else different. Um, if we're able to do any, any material for other infrastructure other than water, what I was asking for is an earmark and then bring it back to the board after I get a plan together. Because I would like to do some type of honest greenway stump in the up-country for, to handle material. I've talked to BLM, and they've partially approved, um, up to about two acres of BLM property across from the base, um, Pioneer Park. So I just want that put into the thoughts as we're going along here, as we're dealing with this material. Um, I don't want the county involved totally with this project. I would like to find a partner to work with us as far as the county and to, to run and control it. Um, you know, so that our, you know, our contracting load doesn't increase. I'd like to see if we can go with some other entity. And so that's just something I'd like to set as an earmark as a possible thought.
Oh, I ca- I could see that, uh, something like that, especially if BLM would put the ground forward. The only problem might be if BLM ground, I don't know, know if they bet you bring in, uh, a co- like a private contractor as a partner, which would really be helpful because they may want to bring in logs and grind stuff and.
They would allow, as long as we, as long as, um, we would allow, they would allow that type of a, a secondary contractor to come in, not do their own business, but do stuff in for either, um, like say the Fire Safe Council or anything else, and, and run with it, uh, that aspect. We can't make money off the project, but somebody else could. Problem is you only have a certain amount of time to spend this money. What do we have, like another two years?
Oh, no, we've got another four years.
So.
That, that's one reason why we've been going very slow and meticulously, not to, to overspend in need of for COVID. But since COVID has, uh, slowed significantly and there have been other, other funds, uh, to cover the public health requirements, we've been not using these as, as, we've actually been trying to avoid using these wherever possible, knowing they could be reallocated. So.
So, uh, so I just want to jump in here. There are very specific allowable expenditure items for the money in the front end. Um, if, and I don't know that the, the, the i- the idea that, um.
It would be after.
So you'd have to sweep it into the lost revenue, and then it would be general fund, and then you, so that's sort of a down-the-road discussion.
And that, and that's what I'm saying.
Have to go into that other pot.
Talking earmarking, that's all I'm, if it gets that direction, that's all the, I'm looking at. I just want to get my voice out there for the up-country. As we know, the fire danger is so high. Oh, we just spent a hundred thousand dollars for going.
No, Cal, OES has spent a hundred thousand dollars.
Seventy-five percent of it.
Yeah.
So far.
Okay, more comments?
Yeah, no, it looks like there's probably what may be an additional two point five million that might be not being spent roughly, Chuck?
Taken out of what we've allocated already.
Yeah.
Yes, and then we've got a million dollars that we had just put in the reserve. That, that brings about three and a half, and then, um, the unallocated was about two million on top of that. So, um, yeah, we're looking at almost, at, you could safely say five. If the board wanted to, we could bring back a, a more, uh, refined, um, uh, budget for what, what remains and what we need to keep allocated and what we don't think we need to, to allocate anymore.
That's what I would have to, but to give you some more direction today, too.
I'm sorry.
I'd let, I'd like that, but to give you some more direction today, too.
Correct.
Supervisor Oneto?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that there's two and a half million plus unallocated funds, so, yeah, there's substantial amount of money that's.
So you don't have anything set aside for broadband yet?
We do not, other than the thirty thousand that we paid for that study.
I, I think, personally, I think we should set some money aside for broadband. It's, uh, specifically included in this, and we know we're gonna need some money to make it happen. You don't look like you're too happy about them.
It's up to the board.
Well, it's, it's a major need in the county as much as, uh, anything else is, and it was specific to the federal money.
I think we could do that, but I mean, only way, only way to want, I'd want to do that is if you have some type of grant proposal where you need a match or something like that that really makes sense, that'd probably be okay. But we're not gonna be able to go out and fund broadband throughout this county.
That's right.
But could we get grants or something possibly, you know, or su- support grant proposals? Yeah.
That's where we need a broadband ad hoc committee to come back with, uh, suggestions. And if there's any money needed, we know we're gonna do, need to do some kind of countywide environmental report. Uh, I don't know if that would be covered by federal, by the, um, grant monies.
Yeah, there's, um, in addition to all of the, uh, grants that, uh, you know, the woman that spoke today, uh, um, talked about, there's also this grant initiative called SURF. It's the Community Economic Resiliency Fund. And, um, right now, the, what's called the Eastern Sierra Region, which is Amador, Mi- the mighty mother, mother low, plus Mono and, uh, Inyo County. And they lumped that, the state lumped it in, and right now we have a five million dollar planning grant. And then we'll be able to apply for, uh, up to, uh, you know, a fund that's, uh, half a billion dollars from, uh, you know, other agencies or there's other regions, there's like seven of these regions. And it's, has to do with, you know, economic resiliency coming out of COVID. And broadband certainly is something that, um, you know, is, could be considered. And so that's, that funding might be available too for the, for that, for our region as well. So there are quite a bit of, uh, grant opportunities. And, uh, um, maybe the board should hear about that, um, that program.
We have a little bit of time to figure that out, too, if, if we're going to need more, some money put into our broadband effort.
So I could, we could put, say, a hundred thousand aside in the, in a proposed, uh, budget for the ARPA funds to, uh, to hold that, or, yeah, no, we, we could do that. Or we could just leave it in there and, uh, put it, take it out of the general fund. If, uh, if you wanted to do that, it, and then it wouldn't have any strings on it.
Probably better way to do it.
So in regard, uh, in regards to the standard allowance, is that something, uh, is that what the board is looking towards, uh, adopting as far as our revenue loss options?
That would give us the most freedom.
I believe so.
The revenue loss standard?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we want to do that.
Okay.
And we could just bring it back to the board at a future date to.
And for once, we don't have ninety days to, to get it done. For this, we could really make a difference with this, four point seven million dollars, or if we do it correctly. I hate to see us spending it on a study, but that's just me.
Now, as we bring it over to lost revenue, now are we gonna, you know, like we have, uh, COVID public health expenditures? They've spent a hundred and twelve, but the remainder of that would pull back out of their budget?
We'll dig into that and find out exactly how much of that they, they think they need.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll leave that there, but my guess is the remainder of it can be, uh, taken back. Uh, there, there was a lot, there were, there were a lot of expenses that, that we started using for the COVID-related response. And then, um, the state gave them another two point two million dollars for a different grant that superseded this, and we stopped spending out of this. But before we take it away, we will make sure we are.
Right. But, you know, so there is a little extra money there, even what we're talking about that we haven't allocated.
Yes. Oh, yeah, there's a lot. The aid to nonprofits would stay, uh, mental health services, I do not believe are, are, is needed anymore. The public health payroll, no longer needed. Uh, the, uh, uh, things like that. Capital improvements for response to COVID has been, we've had sixty thousand, uh, encumbered. Uh, I think the remainder can go, go back.
What happens if we go, um, into this next winter and we have a resurgence of COVID? It's gotta come out of this money, right?
Well, they, um, gotta come. Well, they, um, got to come from somewhere.
Well, I was looking at the news this morning, president's trying to find more money for COVID.
Yeah.
You know, for more stuff for the, the country, so...
I, I would say the state would, would, uh, respond as well, uh, with more funds besides, not just the feds.
But this time you'll take it back? It looks like we're, most of it's going to be just swept into the revenue loss area?
So to clarify, we want to claim the standard allowance, uh, of our total allocation less 830,000 that Chuck's identified.
Actually, I would like to go back to square one, declare the whole thing as, uh, as revenue loss, and then we can make these allocations out of that.
Okay.
Uh...
We'd, we'd bring that into a specific line item number of income?
Into our budget, yeah. I mean, it'll take some reworking of, of, uh, the past, but, um, the, uh, we can do that, but it would make everything cleaner for a future audit.
Can we do that?
We can do that. We can declare, yeah.
Okay.
10 million dollars to have been, because these were all expenses that were, that were legitimate government, government expenses. They weren't, uh, if we hadn't have paid for them out of ARPA, we would have paid for them out of the, the general fund or out of realignment. Uh, so we can, we can do that and make those changes.
So even if we've spent the money in some cases, uh, it's a, we can go back to the beginning?
We should be able to, yeah.
Okay.
I believe so.
All right. But just in case we can't, we'll make sure that we'll give you a flexibility.
Yes.
Okay, is the board okay with that direction?
Yep, it's fine.
Is there any public comment?
Happy Chairman Forster would not commit to broadband?
Um, we're just going to leave it in the pot so that, uh, we could take it out of that pot if it's needed in the future out of the revenue loss monies.
Okay.
Under that, uh, if it's, um, put into a separate line item.
The, uh, the challenge to, to the, these ARPA funds compared to the CARES Act funds were that they had such restrictions in terms of, of explanation as to how, um, the, uh, the funds were being spent and how, uh, various social needs were, were being met. And by declaring it all, uh, as revenue loss, we'd avoid those, uh, those requirements.
This would also take time away, time of now, if, if it's revenue loss, we're not up against time, a calendar, when we have to spend them again.
We're done, although I would imagine we'll have it all spent in four years. Yeah, so, because it's December, it's, we're good till the December of 26th is when these funds have to be spent by.
But if we put them into revenue loss, that is per se spent at that period?
Correct. As soon as we, we do that, then they've been spent.
Sure.
Kim, you said obligated by 24?
Yeah, the period of performance is, um, the monies have to be expended or obligated by December 31st, 2024. And then anything obligated at that time has to be, then expended by the 2026. However, um, if it goes into the general fund, that may...
No, we're done.
Change how that...
As, as soon as, as soon as it goes in the general fund, it's spent.
Okay, that's where I was going, so...
That, that's, uh, yeah, it's been declared.
We met the obligation.
Met the obligation and the intent, go spend.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all clear? Direction clear? Steph, good?
Just a little clarification, I think you said it earlier on, basically, how their program's functioning has changed, and, and that's how we're able to do this, actually, basically?
Yeah, they, they came back before they had said, this is how you have to calculate the, the revenue loss. If you're going to claim revenue loss, this is how you, you claim it. And if you look in, into the, we put the entire ARPA rule in there, but it's around 230, page 234, if you go and dig through it. The, uh, it tells how you calculate it. And then it goes to page two or, or option two and says, alternatively, you can just declare up to 10 million dollars. Any entity can declare up to 10 million dollars to be a revenue loss, one time, just a standard allocation. Uh, and, um, they, they added that at the, at the final rule stage. And, uh, uh, that's different than we had been led to believe was going to happen. So they, they did that in response to the, the cities and counties saying, too much paperwork. Uh, we're spending more on the administration than we should be, uh, giving it out. And they, the feds actually listened and responded, so I'll give them credit for that.
Thank you.
Okay, well done with that, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item 5J, reviewing possible approval pursuant to Emdor County Code 7.36.1.
Do we want to go ahead and put it under, you know, is that direction of staff to do that? Or, or do we have to make a...
We're going to bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, just to make sure.
Oh, continuing, 7.36.1.
Hold on, Kim's got another comment.
We're taking two steps forward, one step back.
Um, I do have to make the declaration of our decision, um, in the report this week. So for, if we're claiming a standard allowance, um, that decision, and I just want clarification that I have your...
Put that in.
I heard the direction was.
Okay.
Okay, then, yeah, then let's get a motion.
We should make a motion for that.
All right, I'll make a motion then that we treat the, uh, ARPA funds with this standard allowance option for revenue loss?
Moved and seconded, any discretion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to wait 10 seconds to make sure we have no more comments on that, so... All right, we're back to, uh, 7.36.18, surface mining of an administrative minor amendment to reclamation plan RP-77-6 to bifurcate 734.64 plus or minus acres acquired by Vulcan Materials Company from Edwin Lands LLC. And the bifurcation will facilitate the transfer of financial responsibility for reclamation of the affected acreage from Edwin to Vulcan and the issuance of a separate mine ID number for the portion acquired by Vulcan. So, uh, Steph, Chuck?
Good afternoon, Mr. Brady, Planning Director. Uh, this action or request from Vulcan Materials Company is to bifurcate or separate 734 acres that they acquired from the Edwin Lands, or Edwin Mine Reclamation Plan, uh, in 2020. Uh, the purpose of that is to, as it says in the description, the separate allows the transfer of financial responsibility to reclaim that 734 acres from Edwin, from that Edwin Mine Rec Plan to Vulcan's own rec plan for that, for that same acreage. And it will also allow the state to create a separate mine ID for the portion that's occupied or, uh, now controlled by Vulcan. This is a similar action that the board took in 2014 when you bifurcated the Howard Properties Reclamation Plan to create the Edwin, uh, Mine Rec Plan. Uh, the State Surface Mining and Reclamation Act allows for minor amendments to be approved as a, as administrative action unless the action involves a substantial increase in the disturbance of the surface area or maximum depth of mining, uh, substantial extension of the termination date of mining operations, changes that would substantially affect the approved in-use of the site, changes to the operation that are inconsistent with previously approved environmental determinations or other changes that the lead agency, the county, uh, deems as a substantial deviation, and this action, uh, doesn't involve any of those criteria. Uh, the approval process per county code allows your, uh, the board's Ag and Natural Resources Committee Supervisors Act and Forster, uh, to review the item and if they...
As your Neto and Forster.
I'm sorry, correct, Neto and Forster, uh, to review, uh, the item. And if they, uh, deem it to be a minor amendment, the item typically goes on your consent agenda for approval, but there was a considerable public interest when the item went to the Ag and Natural Resources Committee. So the committee asked that the item be placed on your, uh, regular agenda, a regular agenda for approval. Uh, the requested action of the board is to adopt the resolution authorizing recordation of a notice of reclamation plan approval for 734.64 acres owned by Vulcan Materials, simultaneously removing that acreage from the Edwin Mine Reclamation Plan and adoption of the findings that are in your staff report.
So Chuck, just a point of clarification, there's a picture. And so we're really talking about the red areas on the picture?
Yes, that's page 636, I believe, of today's...
37, yeah.
Yeah, and yes, only the areas in red are, are to be removed from the Edwin Rec Plan.
That's what we're discussing today.
Correct.
And there already is a rec plan for it. Anyhow, we're just pulling that out.
Right, you're...
Signing it to, uh, Vulcan.
Correct.
And there's no change in use, you know?
No, the, the, um, rights to mine in, under that rec plan stay the same as they were when it was created in 1977.
So this process is essentially ministerial at this point?
It's defined by CEQA as a ministerial action, yes. Someone has to make that decision, county codes, so the board is the one to make that decision.
Okay, so it's just a bunch of paperwork?
Now, if I was reading through all this, there is, there's almost two types of rec plans because it's, there's some pre, I forget what the date was, but it, you know, where they don't have to reclaim it, and there's after a date they do.
So when, when the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act took effect in 1977, areas that were disturbed prior to that and not disturbed afterwards don't have to be reclaimed. If they're disturbed after that, then they have to be reclaimed. The, the Howard Properties had well over 15,000 acres in, in their reclamation plan because they saw the potential for future mining in all of those properties that they owned at the time. So all of that was then one huge rec, reclamation plan. But any new, any new pits would have to go through, you know, environmental review before they could be activated, but that's not what this action does at all. It just transfers responsibility from one owner to another. Kind of like selling a used car, you don't want liability IDs, so we...
You know, one question on that, um, isn't, isn't there a bond set aside for reclamation too?
Yes.
Some funding?
Yes, each, each mine has a financial assurance mechanism in place. It's either a letter of credit, it's a bond, it could be a certificate of deposit, one of those three that's on file, that either the county or the State Department of Conservation can...
Each separate mine, not the property, but each separate mine?
Each, each, not each pit, but each operator. So like the Edwin Mine had several pits in it, they're all included in the same, uh, financial assurity. Happy to answer any other questions?
Well, some of this was, uh, some of those areas that were mined were pre SMAR, too, correct?
Aye, all of the ones that are in the Edwin Plan were pre SMAR.
So they, they don't go, they don't have the same kind of requirements?
They didn't have, they weren't, they didn't go through environmental review in 77, even though that was after CEQA because they were all considered best of mines.
And I, I think the one thing we agreed with is the adjacent property owners were not notified because the, the type of action this is, that it was not a requirement, but probably in the future it would be good just to include them. And I think it was good just so we could answer the questions and most of, some of the, some of the statements that were made needed to be corrected.
Sure, and, and for this action, because it's on your agenda, we did notify everybody within 300 feet of the original rec plan. So everybody within 300 feet of that original 15,000-foot rec plan was notified.
Yeah, and you can see by some of the statements that, uh, this is not, uh, subject to CEQA. That was one of the contentions.
Correct, there has to be a discretionary action that the, that the county would have to make in order to open the, the gateway to, for CEQA to apply. And that's, both the state law and the county code defines this as a ministerial action.
Okay, any further questions? Any public comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors, I'm Patrick Mitchell from Mitchell Chadwick in Roseville, California, on behalf of Vulcan Materials Company today. Um, so I don't have anything really to add to what the Planning Director just said. We totally in support of the, the Planning Department's approach on this. Uh, Vulcan acquired this site in December 2020 from Edwin Lands. We applied for this application in November of 2021. We're required to do this under the contract where we acquired the land. We also have to do it just for state and, uh, county SMAR purposes. So we're really just, like it's already been stated, we're just trying to transfer this from Edwin Land's name and the Vulcan Materials name, nothing else is changing. If, if there's any questions or if there's comments from the public that need responded to, I'd be glad to do that.
If you didn't make this change, I, I think the state would be knocking on your door at some point, correct?
Correct, yes.
Knocking on the county's door.
Both of our doors probably, Chair, yes.
Yeah. Okay, any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone on Zoom? No? All right, we have a suggested action with findings?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing recreation of notice of reclamation plan, approval for 736.64 acres owned by Vulcan Materials, and, um, removing this acreage from the Edwin Mine Reclamation Plan and adopting findings to support the action.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Most carries, thank you. We have two more items, thank you, thanks for waiting so long. Two more items, we'll take the minutes first, any discussion on that?
Yeah, uh, I didn't get through all of them, Jennifer, but, um, John Campbell is a District Four resident. That was one thing that I saw, he's listed as a District Five. I know he probably grew up in District Five. Pardon me?
He was District Five.
He, he grew up there, but he, his residence is on Spanish Street, unless, you know...
You're correct.
Time warp that allows him to be in District Five.
He's also got a house in, house in District Five, though.
I have one question on the last...
He lives on Spanish Street, I think.
Yes, he does.
Page eight, under motion number two, uh, let's see, under the fifth point, uh, all events and operating hours end at 5:00 PM with the exception that one of the eight non-AVA events could last until 9:00 PM. I thought we had left that open to multiple. If they agreed, they could have multiple events to 9:00 PM.
I think it was, with agreement, it was multiple. I think that's what the board said. With agreement of the neighbor, they can have multiple events pass up to nine.
I thought it was...
Only, there wouldn't even be one without the neighbor's agreement, at nine, correct?
Right.
I think that's correct, yeah.
They had to work together, but they could have, it wasn't limited to one.
No.
Correct.
I thought, I thought it was two, but, but if he has to agree, then he has to agree.
Yeah, I think if we just leave it at that, multiple event days could last until 9:00 PM as long as there's a written agreement.
We should listen to it again to make sure it's right.
Let's have one at a time.
Oh, sorry. I, I was just going to suggest that staff should listen to the audio again to make, we don't, what we don't want is for the written, for our recollection and the, the written minutes to conflict with the audio.
Okay. I, I think it was two, two events, but...
I, I'd like to listen, my, my recollection was it was not just said one, let's clarify it.
That's why I thought it was two, but we should have an, an exact number that we put in there.
Exactly, not multiple.
Not multiple.
Multiple could be, could get ugly.
Hundred, six hundred.
Well, they still have to agree, I don't know. Um, okay, with that, staff will clarify that by listening to the tape. And with the other correction, can we have a motion?
A move?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes with the corrections and, uh, staff checking on that one area, um. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most carries, now we're back to the item that was pulled off of the consent agenda, adoption of the uni- unified ordinance, uh, excuse me, uncodified ordinance approving military equipment use policy pursuant to AB Bill 480. So we need to formally approve this item?
We didn't approve this last time?
So this was, uh, put over, uh, we waived the reading and put it over for adoption, and there's a, some language in the, in the state law that kind of suggested that it needed to be adopted on the regular agenda. So it wasn't on your consent, like normally our ordinances or the second adoption actually has on, is on consent. So you'll just, um, make a motion to, if there's no public comment, to, um, approve the, the ordinance.
I'll make a motion then to adopt the, um, ordinance approving military equipment use policy pursuant to, uh, AB 480.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And, uh, with that, no other items, because our closed session is completed, so we are adjourned.